Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 7 o'clock and we're going to call the Urbana City Council Committee of the Hole to Order. If the clerk would please call a roll.
Mr. Ammons.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson. Mr. Madigan. Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe.
Here.
Mayor Pressing.
Here.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of a previous meeting of March 28, 2016. Do I hear a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Moving to second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to public input. I do have a few items on the agenda, or a few items of public, few public input cards. First, Bishop King James and Reverend Doc Reverend, Dr. Evelyn Underwood, who do not wish to speak at this time, but they are still concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer And we have Daryl Cruz, who wants to speak at the time on the agenda, and also Ms. Linda Turnbull wishes to address an issue, but it's, Ms. Linda, it is not actually on the agenda what you want to address, so if you'd like to speak now, this would be your opportunity to do that.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Linda Turnbull, and I'm bringing a complaint to your council about the unidentified drones that are being used in our community, and that they are stalking, harassing, and terrifying some people. I've been dealing with this issue, and many others in my community. We've contacted different people, four state senators, been to a major champagne, Urbana Police Report, also other people being affected, also we wish to speak, but not at this time tonight. What I would like to address is that there's a bill that was in a newspaper on Thursday that talked about, I'm bringing my solely express about this bill because I oppose it, and the bill is BS 2588, which is being supported by the Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System, and seeks to expand their use of drones for training purposes. I really oppose that bill because of the abusive and inappropriate behavior that's already been going on in our community with them, with drones. And we did, I believe, three weeks ago, me and Henry Washington came here to the city council and expressed our complaint about it. So now I'm looking into other issues, maybe going out and getting a petition signed with many people in the community to sign that petition stating that something needs to be done about this and needs to be investigated. Besides bringing to you this complaint, I also want to ask to consider passing an ordinance regulating the use of drones in the city of Urbana, so that people's privacy is respected and their rights are not violated. You wish to ask me any questions?
Anybody? Okay. Thank you very. Yes, Charlie?
I do wish to hear back from the council, because three weeks ago, we were supposed to hear back, me and Henry Washington, and we heard nothing. So I do wish to hear back about this complaint. Again, I live at 1213 West Beersley in Urbana. Thank you.
Okay. So, of course, I will be talking to you about that as well, Ms. Linda. Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee of the hole? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to close public input. Presentations. We have a CU Fresh Start Community Coalition presentation by Tracy Parsons and Alderwoman Marlin. You have 3 minutes and 30 seconds.
You noticed the laughter? Where's our slide show? Good evening. I'd like to introduce Tracy Parsons, who's coordinator of the Community Coalition.
Well, good evening as well. Let me say thank you to the council for allowing us a few moments to come and share with you about CU Fresh Start, and tonight we just wanted to provide you with a little update about our progress. So I'm sure all of you are very aware that, really almost over the last couple of years, cities of Champaign-Urbana have experienced an unprecedented level of gun violence, calls for shots fired, actual shootings, and it really is, in my opinion, this is only Tracy speaking, but I really believe it is at a crisis level, that requires, as a community, we look at this issue differently than we have. And, so thanks for allowing us an opportunity to talk about Fresh Start. So as I shared with you, again, over the last couple of years, and I will show you some of the data here that we're using to, a time period that we're using for our work, we've had a number of high-profile incidents that have made the paper. We have another, a couple of other incidents that, you know, don't make the news as much as some of the others, but they all are significant. And I think what really changed for me was, it was probably last spring, and I happened to watch the news and see someone that I'd grown up with, and she was on the news just talking about this violence has to stop, and she was in her home with her grandson, and they had to take cover. And to actually know her, to hear her speak, and at that point, for me, it was pretty clear that something else had to be done, or we needed to do something to address this. So as you know, the Coalition has been working in our community for the last couple of years, working to really build our partnerships and collaboration, and the city of Urbana's been right there with us. Chief Connolly and Councilwoman Marlin have primarily been your main representatives, but we've had other city officials and schools and parks, and everyone really is at the table in a fantastic way, working on our issues. We've been getting updates monthly at our meetings about the calls for shots fired, and, you know, each month it kept escalating and increasing, and really just required, again, that we take a little bit different approach to address this. So there was a small contingent of folks from the Coalition that went over to Peoria to learn more about their model. Also, at the same time, there were a few Coalition members to go. The law enforcement agencies here together began researching and finding out about a program or initiative and approach, I should call it, called "Don't Shoot." And so we really began to learn and hear more about this practice and approach that's been happening all across the country in about 70 different communities. And then last November, there was a statewide conference that we had a contingent of about 20, a delegation of about 20 from our community, from the county, cities, university, and just big group, public health, and to go over, learn more about law enforcement, community engagement as it relates to our law enforcement work. Chief Cobb hosted a follow-up meeting. We kind of said at that meeting over in Peoria, as we gathered, that this was something we needed to explore. Chief Cobb hosted a meeting that brought us all back together. We talked further and decided this was something we needed to continue exploring. I should also share with you, from Urbana at that conference, I know that Deputy Chief Morgan was there, Officer James, Councilman Ammons was there to make it for a day, and you were there, right? Okay. And so we had a great, again, representation from the city of Urbana there as well. Beginning of the year, we determined that we really wanted to aggressively pursue this model and this approach. We, through the Coalition, agreed that we would make it one of our priorities for 2016, and so we've established a steering committee. So those folks are listed there here with us tonight from the steering committee. It's Patricia Avery from CUAP. Chief Cobb is here. Joan Walls, Deputy City Manager from Champaign. Sheriff Walsh is on the executive committee for the Coalition, and I don't know if anyone else has come in. Pastor Parks has come in here, and so Pastor Parks has obviously played a real unique role as one of the pastors, and working with families that have been directly impacted in burying some of the folks, and so he's bringing a fantastic perspective to our work. So, with the history, you see who's involved on our steering committee. We've been meeting, writing, spending those hours, really putting together a plan to bring forward to the community. And so I know I've rambled here long enough, Diane, I'll turn it over to let her share with you about CU Fresh Start.
Thanks, Tracy. I will add that I've been involved in the Community Coalition for a couple of years now, a little over a couple of years, and one of the reasons I became involved was with the increasing concern I was hearing from my constituents and many of the people in East Urbana where I work spent a lot of time as well, concern over the escalating level of gun violence and the impact that it's had on the community, and the fear of gun violence and the way it's impacted lives. So when I learned about the, this particular initiative, I thought it offered a different approach to an ongoing problem, and I think it offers a very good chance for us to really make a difference here. So, what is CU Fresh Start? It's, and some of the things that makes it, that distinguishes it from your traditional policing approach to gun violence is, number one, this is community-led, it's community-based, and it's community-driven. We are, right now, in the process of sharing information about the proposal, letting you know where we are in the planning stage, and as we go along, we will be asking for community support and input. It's also a focused effort, and this means it is very narrowly focused on the individuals who are actually engaged in gun violence. And this, estimates at this point, we don't know for sure yet, but maybe 25 people, maybe up to 50, but a very small, relatively small number of people who have a history of gun violence in this community. And it's an effort to deter gun violence, stop, to interrupt the cycle of violence and stop the violence before it starts, and that makes a difference as well. And finally, it gives people the choice, the people involved in this violence a choice, and the responsibility is on them. They can choose to stop shooting and move in a different direction, and if they do, the community will support them in specific ways, which I can share with you. You know, I suppose it's obvious why we should try this, because what we're doing isn't working as well as it needs to work, and we've seen this increasing level of gun violence and this ever, ever-rising tension, and it's had a devastating impact on families, both the families of the victims and the families of the shooters. And in this very small community, those groups have significant overlap, so it's traumatizing to the people involved. It damages neighborhoods, it creates fear in the neighborhoods, and it actually endangers the whole community. Our families, our neighborhoods are the building blocks of our communities, and when they are traumatized by violence like this, the entire community suffers. And I've heard so many people say over and over again, "We've got to do something about this. We have to stop the violence. People have just had enough." Well, they've had more than enough. And so I am, that's why I decided to become involved in this. Just a, just a little bit of information, we took one year from February 2015 to February 2016, in Champaign-Urbana, there were 125 verified incidents of gunfire. These were incidents where physical evidence was collected, either a weapon was retrieved, shell casings, bullets were retrieved from homes or vehicles or people. It does not include all the reports of shots fired, which aren't always verified. Three young men were killed, over 20 young men have been injured, and what's especially frustrating is over 160 innocent people in homes and vehicles were endangered. And in Urbana, we had an incident a year ago, February, on Scottswood Drive, where shots were fired into a home, and there were a number of people in the home, and I think four or five children, four or five young children, who could have been hit by one of those bullets. And it's, frankly, I'm surprised that it hasn't happened at this point. But, but it's not just the people directly involved in these incidents, there's a lot of innocent people who are being harmed in this process. In that same time period, this is a map of where the incidents occurred in Champaign, the red figures represent actual shooting victims hit, and the blue circles are reports of shootings or shots fired. While they are clustered in certain areas of the community, again, the impact is felt community-wide, and it's not confined to Champaign. We have the same, for that same time period, these are the incidents of, verified incidents that have happened in Urbana. This doesn't include, for example, the shooting that occurred in my ward a few weeks ago, which was 4 o'clock on a Sunday afternoon, when people were going to the grocery store shopping, and gunfire erupted across the street. So again, it affects everyone in this community. Focus deterrence, this approach has a record of success. It's based on the strategy that was originally developed by David Kennedy. He was a researcher at the Kennedy School of Government at Harvard University, and you may have heard of Operation Ceasefire in Boston in the 1990s. That, that approach was based on his research and the strategies he developed. Since then, many other cities have adopted this approach of focus deterrence. The closest to home has been in Peoria, and as Tracy said, we were in Peoria, we listened to officials over there. They've been very helpful in, in developing the plan for our community. Every city customizes this approach to fit the particular needs of their community, but they all keep the same basic, follow the same basic recipe as far as the essential components and the way that the core offenders are engaged, and that's what we're going to share with you tonight. So our CU Fresh Start has a new name, and because it offers a fresh start to the individuals involved, and I think it represents a fresh start to the way we approach policing in this community in a lot of ways. So the three essential components, or the three parts of the recipe that are always there, are the, the voice of the community, which is this phase we're in now, the law enforcement involvement, and the involvement of service providers in the community. The most, the first pillar is the role of the community voices, and especially in sharing the impact of gun violence, both the family and friends of the victims, the family and friends of the core offenders, where religious leaders, funeral directors, doctors are becoming involved. These are the individuals who deal directly with the, with the physical, with the emotional, with the spiritual trauma that gun violence inflicts on this community. We also are listening and engaging neighborhood residents who are living with this violence and who are tired of it, and the voices of former offenders are also very important, and elected officials. We are sharing this information with everyone. We, one of our primary responsibilities is to public safety in our community, and I can't think of a more important and significant public safety challenge that we have right now is than, than the cycle of gun violence we're experiencing. The second pillar, or component of Fresh Start, is the role of law enforcement, and the, each of these three components are equally important. Right now, the law enforcement community, which involves the police departments from Champaign-Urbana, Rantoul, the Sheriff's Department, the U of I's Police Department, the State's Attorney's Office, the Probation Office, we're working, they're working with the steering committee to come up, we came, they came up with objective criteria that will be used to identify the individuals that this effort will focus on. There's been a lot of misunderstanding or misrepresentation out there, so what we want to do is clarify the, the criteria include, the people that will be focused on in this initiative are age 18 or older, no youth under the age of 18. These individuals are on either parole or probation, they've had prior felony arrest, prior gun arrest, or violent crime conviction, or there's, and there's credible information of their recent involvement in violent crimes. So these individuals have direct ties or a history of gun violence in the community. And then the third pillar is the role of the service provider. If the individuals choose to put down the guns, stop the shooting, and stop engaging in gun violence, the service providers in the community will work with the case manager to, to help identify these individuals' needs. If they want help in changing the course of their life, the community will be there to help them. The, for the first year, the Champaign County Mental Health Board is going to be funding this position. But as we worked with the case manager in Peoria, some of the things that she said that people were asking for help with were things as simple as getting a state ID, or restructuring child support payments, or putting food on the table for their families, you know, each, each individual's going to have specific needs, and, and we really won't know what they are until we start communicating with the people. But this is a very important component of this approach, because there will be some supports in place to help people make a change in their life. So at this point, you're probably saying, "Well, how's this all actually going to work? How do you communicate with the core offenders?" And Tracy will be describing that.
Okay. So I just really want to reinforce that this is a draft of our model, and part of our process is to share this in as many spaces as we can over the next 30 days or so to get as much feedback as we can. And so the call-in phase is actually the engagement piece, or the engagement part of the initiative. And I will say to you, in Peoria's example, it was ve, it was very tough. And you, theirs is an open meeting. We are talking about that ours would be a closed meeting. So what I mean by that is invited members of the community are there. There were probably 75 or 80 people in the room the day that we went, from all segments of the community. And I don't think we want that type of public display here in our, our community. And so that particular day, there were 13 African-American men coming into the room. That was the entire group, and it was heart-wrenching. So this is not pleasurable work, and it's tough, and their actions, obviously, are determining why they're there, but if, if there isn't that level of compassion and understanding that this is a traumatic initiative, community-wide for all of us, well. So, you have the law enforcement officials, there's everywhere from judges to police officials to State's Attorney, to talk with the offenders about law enforcement's response. It is clear, it is direct, it is very descriptive, that, that we know who they are, and they are there because they've met the criteria. The community voices part is really the most impactful part, I think, of the presentation to the offenders. So the night that we were there, there was information about a seven-year-old boy who was, they showed a picture, and he was laying in the bed, and they said, "Well, he's not just taking a nap, he was in his bed as bullets flew through his house and killed the seven-year-old kid." There was another female there who had lost her brother to a senseless encounter where he had an exchange with someone at a, at a fast-food establishment, and he was shot to death. And so it's very traumatic, intense part of this. There also were former, ex-game members, former offenders there to talk about how they had made their changes in their life. That was also a very impactful part of the community voice. And then the third part of the call-in is, again, the offer for resources. So there actually were, the day we were there, two pastors who, one had been a former offender themselves, they had initiatives, they were inviting them to their church for support, for engagement, for mentoring, and so everyone comes together to give a common message that the violence must stop. We are here to let you know we want you to be successful, we want you to be a productive member of our community, if you're willing to make some changes and do, and do things in a different way. And so at this point, it's pretty, again, direct that, you know, they, they had pictures along the wall of offenders who had made choices and those that had hadn't, and how many, how long their sentences were. Again, this is a pretty depressing environment, to be honest with you, but a very key part of the call-in is to direct and honest approach. Next slide.
There it is.
What do you want me to say?
So the second, the second part of that, the initiative, is up to the offenders, and they can make a choice. If they choose to continue gun violence, they know that there's going to be a law enforcement response, and it'll be swift, and it'll be fair, and it'll be certain. If they choose to end gun violence, and if they want help, the help is available for them. The case manager in Peoria said of the people who chose to, to make a fresh start, about 30% actually asked for any help from the service providers, and it was, again, very individualized. But, but the key to this approach is that people have an opportunity to stop the violence, and it, again, it puts the responsibility, to a certain extent, on the individual, and either way, there will be a response from the community. How will we measure progress? The goal is to decrease the gun violence, to decrease the number of shooting incidents, to reverse that upward trend in gun violence that we've seen over the last few years. This isn't going to happen overnight, although in High Point, North Carolina, it literally, the change happened overnight. It was astonishing. But we're in it, we're in it for the long haul. We also are, want to document what happens to these individuals and the people that we, that we encounter, and so we'll be documenting outcomes. And then finally, increase in community awareness and participation. That's the, one of the major goals of this effort, is to increase community participation in, in addressing this problem together. We're all in it together, we're all impacted by it, and, and it's going to take a community-led, and I think a community-driven effort to, to make a real difference here. So we're asking for feedback, any questions? We have a number of experts here from the steering committee who I'm sure would be happy to answer questions.
So thank you all for the presentation. Mayor had it first, and then Charlie, I'm sure other folks will have questions as well.
Yeah. Tracy, you said that this steering committee decided to not have it be open to the public. When you looked at all the other cities, are they all open to the public for these discussions?
Well, I think, again, there's been a number of meetings and conversations as we've talked about this, and I think where I've heard maybe the most pushback from those in the community with concerns about this approach, it's been on this image and perspect, and perception of what the call-in looks like from an open perspective. And I think we, as a steering committee, talked about, again, a unique piece, or unique for our community, is that we didn't think that the call-ins needed to be just an open session.
Okay, but are all the other cities open, or is there a mix?
Well, I think each community kind of does. There's, you know, uniquely to their community, so.
I think it'd be useful to know how each community did it, and also look at the results and see if there's some kind of correlation. Is openness better, or is it better to have it be closed?
Sure.
Thanks.
Charlie?
Yes, I have five or six things that I, I-
Yes, I have five or six things that I try to find out more information on. So the success piece, you know, you said High Point saw a very immediate effect. You know, it'd be good to know how these other communities have done. So I think the mayor's question's really relevant there, so I'll leave that one. Rantoul is listed up front, but then I don't see any of them in the steering committee. Is Rantoul going to be part of this program too? Are they going to be doing the same things the cities and the county are doing? I know there's a new police chief up there.
Well, the data shows us right now primarily the shooting incidents are taking place in Champaign and Urbana. And so Rantoul is a partner in the coalition and involved in our work. I would anticipate that we will receive feedback from Rantoul, and we're all not that far different, so there's certainly a chance that something could happen in Rantoul that impacts what happens in Champaign and Urbana, but they're not represented on the steering at this point.
So I know the focus is on existing known individuals. You've got that objective criteria. How do you identify and stop, say, revenge action by somebody new? You know, a relative, a friend, who's had somebody, you know, somebody close to them affected? How are you going to identify and keep those people from jumping into this cycle of violence?
Well, I don't know if the law enforcement folks would want to...
Anthony's coming up here. Grab some more chairs.
I'll try to take that question on. As far as individuals who may jump into it, who are not on our radar, this and that, this program is not going to stop that. We're going to have to do traditional policing to deal with them. There are going to be individuals who may flare up for unknown reasons. You may still have gun violence in domestic situations. This program's not designed for that. This is going after criminal crop forest individuals who are out there regularly engaged in this activity, the ones that we know, can verify. When you look at the data, you'll find that the vast majority of people who are pulling trigger are the same people a lot of times, or same groups, same dynamics. So some of the revenge stuff, if it's the same group on our radar, we'll be able to address.
Yeah, so, you know, maybe that's the key, is that, you know, not only the individuals, but maybe some of these are groups. And so if you're addressing the group...
Yes.
That would, you know, and you don't really say that here, but if you're addressing the group, that would probably take care of much of this. So that would answer that question. You know, while you're here, Anthony, it seems like the caseworker, the case managers are going to be really, really important in how this succeeds.
Yes.
So how do you choose those individuals? How are they selected? How are they trained? Do you move them? If somebody's not working with somebody, you're going to move them very quickly and bring somebody else in? I guess, you know, to me, that may be a key to how this thing, the whole thing succeeds.
I would agree. Case management's going to be very key, very important. It all depends on how we put the whole group together. But as far as the case manager, you're going to need someone who has rapport with this group, someone who's going to be from our community. What I mean by be from our community, someone who already engaged with this clientele to some degree right now, that can be helpful. As far as how they train this and that, I can't speak to that. I have to defer to the social service group. They know what the training would be. They can reach out to some of the other communities who've had caseworkers and what was their background. But we're going to need individuals who can be engaged and go out and meet these individuals where they're at, and help guide them to where we need them to move to.
Okay.
The plan right now is for the case manager to be based at Prairie Center, so they'd also have experience in addiction issues and that sort of thing, but that's the plan now.
Okay. And so my last question is related to jobs. On page two, I... The top page two immediately thought, okay, you know, people coming in, you want them to stop, they need to become engaged in a productive way in the community, so they probably need jobs. In your priorities, which is a pretty big list here, pretty ambitious for a year, you talk about jobs for, and youth development, and I think about youth development as under eighteen here, but I think about jobs and people here who are probably over eighteen that you've identified, and how we're going to get them education and jobs.
Well, my first response is that, first, this is not a jobs program. And so what we are addressing with them is our guns violence issue. And so there may be an offender or a person participating in the initiative that has job needs that we would want to support, but again, this is about changing the action around their gun violence-related activity. And so, you know, what Peoria has informed us about is that each one of the participants or the offenders have a different level of needs, some more intensive, some might be just a level of support. And I think that's how we're looking to approach it at this point.
Yeah, I guess echoing back to the mayor's question, it'd be good to know the approaches that a lot of communities are using on this, and I'm very hopeful for this. I think this is a really great start. I wish you a lot of luck. Been to a few of the meetings, and I know it won't be easy, but it's the beginning. You know, this is the kind of thing that I've said before. It's, to me, and the reason I raise jobs here is that it's a comprehensive thing. You know, you need jobs, you need education. It's not just one thing. It's, you've got to strike it in multiple levels in multiple ways. So the more holistic this program can go, the further it can go, you know, saying, you know, making sure, okay, if this person needs a job, get them a job somewhere. You know, to me, that's very important. So I wish you a great deal of luck, and I will be very supportive. Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, I'm interested in trying to understand a little bit more about the call-in process, how that actually goes. So assuming there's some kind of, there's two-way communication between the offenders and the people, I guess the victims or the people that have been affected by violence, you would probably, I mean, from what I started reading David Kennedy's book, and from what I understand, most of it isn't probably drug and money-related. It's mostly beefs and personal matters and things like that that causes a lot of the retribution shootings and stuff. So I think in order to understand how that occurs and how to treat it, and how to provide alternative dispute resolution-type of things, you'd want to hear from those people, from the offenders. So I'm wondering how, when there's this two-way communication going on, is there some kind of immunity or protection for the offenders so that if they do reveal something that they were involved in that you didn't know about, that they would be more open to discuss those kinds of things?
I'm trying to envision what you're tossing out there, because when you talk about the call-in portion of it, it's not really a two-way communication, so to say. It's more of a one-way communication as far as the individuals who are selected during the call-in are the ones who are going to meet the criteria, and the criteria being eighteen years old, felony conviction for firearm records, someone... I don't have all the criteria in front of me. I don't know it off the top of my head. But when they meet that criteria, thank you, here it is, eighteen years old on parole or probation, prior felony arrests, prior gun arrests, or violent crime conviction, or credible information of recent involvement in violent crime. When they meet those five criteria, that makes them eligible to be considered for a call-in. They're going to be someone we're going to look at. We may find fifty people that meet that criteria. All fifty of them won't be called in for a call-in. We're only going to be taking a small group of them, anywhere from ten to fifteen, probably. And those individuals will get the opportunity. We will be working with the community to select the individuals based upon their activity, what they're doing in our community, what do we know, and the problems that they're inflicting upon the community. But once the individuals are selected, they're brought in for a call-in, at which point in time, every prospective stakeholder from community, social service group, and law enforcement will give an opportunity to appeal to this individual that they put the weapons down and allow us to help them. If they choose not to, then we're looking to hold them accountable. And that's basically allowing individuals who's part of the Gun Task Force now to just become their project, to become individuals that they're going to hold them accountable, and they will get zero tolerance from law enforcement across the board. So we'll make every officer in the community aware of it, state's attorney office will be aware of it, as others, and we'll look to hold the individual accountable. Our hope is they'll make a positive choice and choose to do something that's going to be better for them and better for our community as a whole.
So it is pretty much one-way communication, that you're making a presentation to them on the impact of violence, but you aren't really hearing from them...
At the call-in.
...how they got into that.
Exactly. And that's at the call-in, but during the social service and the other impact, there could be opportunity for two-way communication between the caseworker and them, dealing with needs, hearing back from them, and information can be funneled to law enforcement if necessary or dealt with appropriately with the social service provider, if that is possible. Okay, thanks.
I think one thing also, Mr. Brown, that is an important part of why we're taking on this approach this way, is that, one, we want our community to know that the violence is something that we all should say is unacceptable. You know, the scary part for me in doing our community work is that these neighborhoods can begin to normalize this type of activity, and that's the scary part. So there can be a shooting, one hour, and fifteen minutes later, people, oh, yeah, we had another shooting today, and they've gone on with it completely. It's something we can't accept as a mindset for these neighborhoods where these things are taking place. So we hope the message is out to this population that Champaign County, Champaign, Urbana is not going to allow their violence to continue at this place, and that's the message we want to convey more than anything tonight.
Dennis?
So I like this. This is pretty commendable, really, a big project. I guess I was wondering a little bit about the comment, I think I heard, that about thirty percent of the people who are given opportunity to interact and enter a program in other communities actually do reach out to social work assistance.
That was just in Peoria.
Okay.
That was just the experience there.
Well, that's a good one, perhaps, thirty percent. That's maybe, I don't know if you consider that pretty successful, actually. And then it sounded like, well, I guess I was wondering, you talked a little bit about what kind of a person, what kind of a profile you were using to find that individual, or those individuals who would be selected for a special assistance. So is there any hope or process to address those who fail to meet that qualification, who are probably now going to, what, be either recommended into the justice system as a consequence of their actions? Or is there a safety net even for those people somewhere in the process?
I want to make sure I understand your question. So for those who do not meet the criteria, is there something we have in place to work with them?
Yeah.
Recognize there's always going to be traditional methods that we use to deal with people who are not part of this group, and crime is going to happen in some areas, some gun violence are going to happen that may not be related to this group or part of this initiative that we're still going to have to deal with. Based on the totality of circumstances, determine what type of service those individuals will offer, but everyone who we come in contact with doesn't end up in the criminal justice system, per se. There's programs that offer to the state's attorney's office that deter individuals away from it. There's a youth assessment center, some young people will get the opportunity to go through, but there's other things that can step in and help individuals who may not qualify to be part of this program.
It sounds like concentrated effort on a few individuals will probably bear results, and I hope so, I certainly hope so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, Charlie or Mayor, would you please take the chair?
I will. Okay. I assume you want to be here?
Yes, I would, if you wouldn't mind recognizing me.
Aaron?
So thank you all for coming. I do appreciate the work. Of course, Tracy alluded to the fact that I did travel to Peoria to listen to one of the presentations. I've been in a couple of the meetings that took place at the City of Champaign, and so I have registered many of my concerns with the group about this approach. I appreciate the efforts that have been made to even give it a different look, a different name. I certainly had some trouble myself with the call-ins and the aspect of how people are just sort of shuffled into a group of folks and sort of, in my view, sort of chastised and given an ultimatum. And so I want to ask a couple of questions that I think are important, but I wanted to offer some context first. So you talked about the desensitizing. Tracy, you alluded to that, and I feel that even as I sit and listen to the presentation, because there's been lots of shootings and murders and stuff that have taken place over the last twenty-five years in our community, and certainly it has spiked over the last few years. And when I say lots, I'm certainly not saying like Chicago and all that kind of stuff, but I'm saying there's been a lot more that don't get the newsreels and the highlights, so to speak, and be on the front page of the newspaper and things like that. Lots of colleagues who have been shot, who have been killed. So this sort of desensitized feeling, I just want to be upfront, that I feel that even now, right? Because I think one of the things, Diane, that you spoke to in particular about fear of gun violence and people going to the grocery store or not being able to sit in their homes and enjoy their meals, the young man who was killed, I saw the picture of the seven-year-old laying in his bed, and it is heart-wrenching to think that that could be my child or anybody else's child. So I don't like to see or hear of gunfire or bullets flying into people's homes, whether they're coming from these young men who are shooting, or from police officers who are shooting into houses and leaving bullets in the back of chairs. So I want to make sure that when we talk about gun violence, that the impact and the fear that people have should be talked about in its totality, right? It shouldn't just be talked about from one perspective. Many of us still bear the pain of the killing of Kiwan Carrington in our hearts, right? This is still gun violence, whether it's from the police or if it's from someone else who, from somebody who shouldn't, quote-unquote, "have a gun." I just hope that when we roll out projects like this, right, the spirit in which I received this project in Peoria, which was so different and so unique, I was very happy to see you there and to see Chief Conley there and to see how you all responded to it, because I did see it as something different. The different thing to me was indeed how the approach to helping and thinking outside of the box would be approached. And so I'm just wondering, and Charlie, you alluded to this, about the employment aspect of it. Like, if we look at these numbers of these young men who were involved in the shootings, I wonder how many of them were unemployed at the time, right? I wonder, the people who were arrested for the... We've arrested some people, and they've been convicted for some of the murders over the past two years, right? I wonder, what did they get as far as the time and the convictions that they received? I just, I'm not convinced that a punitive response is going to change the behavior of a group of people who are acting out of impoverished thinking or financial hardships. I don't know if that's going to change their behavior. We have lots of punitive responses to some of these things. I don't know if it's going to change that particular behavior without employment. So for me to get off the streets, it took a job at the University of Illinois with benefits and with opportunities to do something different for my family, right? I don't know that a counselor that I can crown their shoulder is going to change my reality when I go back into the streets, right? I just think that those are some things that I would love to see the private businesses, I would love to see the University of Illinois, I would love to see both the cities saying that we have some jobs to offer, summer jobs or something like that. So I just wanted to sort of echo the importance of employment being one of the pieces that we really look at to offer something different. And I know everybody's not prepared for every job, right? You know, I understand. I mean, I could probably be the chief, no, I'm just kidding. No, I know that we're not, everybody's not prepared to do every job, so I understand that there are some dynamics around that. But what resonated to me was that there was going to be something different, and slowly but surely, it just sounds like we're still going to, we are going to have this component for caseworkers and stuff like that, and I think there's going to be some opportunities for people who are on the fence. But it still sounds very much like we're, you know, it's going to be what it's been, right? We're going to target you more, right? We're going to have a more targeted approach. So, you know, I definitely can see the benefits of that, having a more targeted approach. One of the things that did stand out to me... One of the things that did stand out to me, when I watched it, when I read the majority of the book, was that a small group of people are committing the largest number of the violent crimes. So, to me, it is solid police working to say that this is where the bulk of the activity is taking place, these are those who are the most violent offenders and stuff like that. I can understand that, I can wrap my head around that. So, I mean, I'm not going to go on and on, I just wanted to share some of my concerns and thoughts as you all sort of roll this out for everybody. I think there's one other thing that I was going to ask about, and I'm sure this will continue my reputation of being controversial. So, I'm going to say again that I'm going to go out on a limb and say that a good percentage of these particular shootings and murders are going to be related to some sort of drug activity, whether it's a attempted robbery, a attempted burglary, or I'm trying to get in the house because I think you have a bunch of guns, or a bunch of money and drugs inside. So, it would be, I believe, in all of our best interest if we also spent considerable time looking at how we can remove prohibition, which feeds the underground market for guns, for drug activity, for violence that takes place. And I would love to see you and Chief Conley, members of law enforcement against prohibition, but I'm just, I'm just going to throw my ideals out there, right? I don't know if it's going to happen, right? But, and a state's attorney who would join such an organization as well, because if we really want to remove the tendency and the desire for people who don't have jobs, who don't have high levels of education, the drug market is going to be an option for them, and they are going to use guns to protect those drugs, that turf, that money that they accumulate. So, that prohibition drives our concerns and makes everyone live in some form of fear of bullets flying into their houses, of activities taking place, because that's just going to increase. Now, I know it's difficult, I walked into the cannabis dispensary, I did a tour of it in Champagne, and it's mind-boggling to me that all the people that I know who have been arrested for marijuana, now it's going to be legally sold across the counter. That really is mind-boggling to me, it's hard for me to even absorb that as much as I have talked about the problems with prohibition. So, I understand it's difficult for us to wrap our head around that, but I just wanted to add my voice to that once again, because I believe it's extremely important and there's evidence to support that.
So, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to respond, but I talked, we talked a little bit about designing an initiative unique for our community, and the data shows, and I had a really long conversation, discussion with David Kennedy about this issue, and what he talks about is the street code issue, or someone feeling they've been dissed or disrespected as the main driver for the violence, not the drugs. And so, it'll be interesting to see and learn as we have our own initiative, what really is the driver behind the violence, but again, I wanted to share that because I think, I want you to be open to hearing, and, and the best part about what I believe we're going to be doing, Councilman Ammons, is that we're going to be designing and building what we don't have in place now. So, we don't have an infrastructure to work with and support this population. So, we might not be able to save, or we might only be able to save thirty percent of our target offenders, but what we are going to be able to build is an infrastructure to be able to serve this population in our community that we don't have now. And so, I want you to keep an open mind about this, and I've said this to you in our conversations about it, I believe we can design this to be effective for this population to address their needs in a unique and different way that we've never done in our community, and that's, that's what I believe is the key for, for our initiative, CU Fresh Start.
Well, I would say that I appreciate the opportunity to share a different, or just to add a different perspective to the conversation, because I'm firmly aware that there could be, "You stepped on my shoes, you disrespected me, we're dating the same people and there's conflict that leads to," I mean, wars have been fought over relationships, and countries have been, and empires have been destroyed over that. I understand that that component exists as well, I'm just saying that if we're going to look at the totality of this as well, this new dynamic, this forty-year dynamic cannot be overlooked as far as its impact on communities all over the country, and if we really want to get to the violence issue, we cannot overlook that there's a significant part of that that should be addressed. So, and I understand that this may not be the committee or the organization to do that, okay? But if we're talking about that particular issue, I would challenge us to say, "How couldn't we be open to something like that if we're actually trying to address, and there's significant evidence that shows that this contributes to it?" So, that's all I'm saying, I'm not trying to overlook anything else, I think the effort is a honorable effort, nobody wants bullets flying into their houses, we want to be safe on our streets, I understand that you're going to have to do your job. I'm just offering perspective, that's all.
Thank you.
Charlie?
Yeah, just real quickly, I think Bill was, Bill mentioned it, and I went back and looked at your priorities under youth development, there's nothing here about conflict resolution training, and I think that's a component that needs to be in here. And likewise, just as I mentioned, you know, you've got job training in here for youth, we need jobs for folks that are over eighteen, I think for the program to be successful, they also need conflict resolution training. I mean, if it's, if it's street code issues, then, then conflict resolution is really what, there's a big piece right there. And I would tend to agree that I think underneath some of this, you know, that may be one layer, but underneath it, another layer is, is the whole issue of, of drug-related violence, so, and that, but that's a, that's a much bigger issue, and that's an issue that we will be taking up, and we'll be taking it up, you know, we need to take it up with the state and the federal level and so on and so forth, so that's a huge piece.
Yes, sir.
But, but this is, this is where we, this is where we can have an impact.
Mike? Thank you. First of all, just, I want to commend you for your efforts, I think this is, this has a lot of promise. Marlon, I appreciate you, all the work you've done on this over the last couple of years. I do want to say that I do agree with the Mayor and with Charlie, I'd be very interested in knowing what success the other communities have had prior to us with regard to whether or not these, these call-ins are open or not, I think that's, I think it would be a mistake to just decide that we think that's distasteful or inappropriate without knowing the success that other communities have had, for the simple reason that, and I understand I, we don't want to overly humiliate people and that kind of thing, I get that, but at the same time, positive pressure from a large portion of the community can have a beneficial effect. I don't necessarily think we ought to just decide that vigilante group of, you know, a hundred people are going to turn the situation bad, it may be just the opposite, it may be a whole lot of people saying, "We are here to support you, and here's why." So, I don't think it's necessarily, I don't think we ought to be premature in deciding that these ought to be closed or open, we ought to look at what's happened in other communities. The only other thing that I'll, I'll say at this point in time, and I, you know, there's a lot to learn for me, and I think for everyone in this process, is as maybe the only employer up here, it's, it's easy to say there need to be jobs for these people. The struggle here is that these people need to be employable, so how do we help make them employable? It's very difficult for me, if you came to me and said, you know, "Here's, here's Johnny, and he's been convicted of violent gun crimes, but he's, but he's, he's willing to, willing to forego all of that and commit to our conditions, and gee, Mike, will you give him a job?" Well, I have twelve-inch knives in my business, I have customers who expect to be safe in my business, I have employees who want to come to a safe work environment every day. So, there's, there's that, there's that difficult component that I think we need to come to grips with, and how do we help these people who probably have, for the most part, not taken their education seriously? Or if they have, something has gone awry at some point in time, and maybe they can get back on track, but if they haven't, how can we get them into a vocational program? How can we get them into a college program? How can we help them find some kind of job that, that gives them hope for the future? So, I think that's a huge component for me as a potential employer of somebody like this in the future, it's, but my whole point here is, we can't just say, "By gosh, you know, businesses need to provide jobs for these folks, they have to be able to perform the job."
I would respond, that's exactly the sort of thing that was pointed out to us when we went to Peoria, the case manager noted that, and how very careful we need to be not to label this as a jobs program. The case manager pointed out that a lot of the people, they were capable of not shooting, and you don't need a job to stop shooting people, you can just stop shooting people. But she pointed out that many of them were not at, quite at the point in their lives where they are ready to go back to school, or ready to start working, or ready to do this, so she had to meet them where they were, and sometimes it was as simple as getting food on the table, buying diapers for their kids, getting an ID card, it was very, you know, they had to, they had to tailor the help to what the people asked for, and, and that's something we need to remember, this initiative is to stop the cycle of violence and interrupt the cycle of violence, and I think we can do that, and I don't disagree with anything that's been set up here as far as the root causes, but the scope of this understandably has to be narrow at this point in terms of just our resources alone. The, and the, and the simple, and one solution to actually preparing people to be employable, I would say would be to get a state budget and start funding our community colleges again, and that would go a long way with helping toward that end, but...
Well, just one other follow-up that I forgot to mention, I do absolutely support what Charlie's saying about some kind of way to get through to people about conflict resolution. A huge issue, so, I can hire somebody, and I have hired people, without high school diplomas, I have hired felons, I absolutely believe in second chances. But, the whole conflict resolution thing is a big, what I'm hearing here is, some of this stuff happens over the most trivial of perception of disrespect. Well, a huge part of learning a job and being trained for a job is to be able to take constructive criticism. So, people need to understand when that criticism is constructive, even if it does seem harsh. So, conflict resolution, I think, is a big thing, people need to understand, "I'm, I'm talking to you this way, in a positive way, but I'm criticizing you, but it's constructive." So, anything we can incorporate into this to help people understand, "We are trying to help you, we're not trying to run you down," is also a really big deal in my world.
So, I guess I just really wanted to add and maybe stress a little bit, as we're having this part of our conversation, is that, again, through CU Fresh Start, it's not going to be our responsibility, or the caseworker's responsibility, to provide all the programming. This is where the community and the resources and the existing service providers, all of those play a very important role, and so, again, the caseworkers to help the person identify what their needs are, there are already, I mean, again, we've got a great community college here, we've got a number of great training programs already in place, how do we get those folks connected to those, not that we're going to do those, so, whether it's employment, whether it's housing assistance, whatever the needs of the person are, so that's the reason I shared with you in the beginning, you know, we are, the case manager will be a linkage person, they're not going to be the person doing the actual programs and services, so I just want to get that out loud, we heard employment, and so I know we've all put it in our notes, that that's a key component to this, but that's, again, not directly this, and so, Trish, one of our steering committee members wants me to just make sure that I get out that these families and these neighborhoods are on fire and traumatized by this activity that's happening, and we are, part of our work engaging those families that have directly, and those neighborhoods that have been impacted by this level of violence, to strengthen and support those, that part of, this part of our community, and we want to make sure that's not lost, because that's really the driver. When you can't sit on your porch, when the kids can't go play in the park, you know, I think we all have to stand and say, "That's the priority group we've got to make sure we're taking care of, so..."
Mayor?
Is this your first stop? Well, thank you for starting in Urbana, and certainly, you know, this is a huge issue, and our number-one job is public safety, so there's a problem going on, so I think it's great that you're engaging with it, and we will help you any way we can.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Just before, this is just my parting shot, you don't have to respond, don't respond, okay? How about that? I just want to make sure, as I started this conversation, or my points, that we talk about contextualizing and how it's being presented, and so, Alderman, Alderwoman Marlon said, "You don't have to have a job to stop shooting people." I don't know if we're trying to send a message that people are just walking around shooting people, there are issues, there are, whether it's a beef, it's a problem, it's a drug, I don't know what it may be that's precipitating that. So, to say you don't have to have a job to stop shooting people, I think we understand that, but I don't know if we're, I feel like when you say something like that, you send a message that people are just walking around shooting people, right? And I think that that's problematic if we're trying to produce a particular response from the community that paints a particular picture of individuals who are involved in these activities, right? There are circumstances surrounding, there are mitigating factors that lead to particular behaviors, so what we're trying to interrupt are those behaviors or those situations that lead to that behavior, right? So, that could be employment, that could be various different things, right, that would interrupt that. So, I'm just saying that I don't think that's the best way to approach that.
I didn't mean to trivialize the issue, and you're, you're correct in that there are circumstances, and what people perceive leads to behavior, so, but, and I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you all. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation from Dennis Roberts, "The Practice of Roof Replacement or Cancellation," and you have now one minute to present, sir.
Yeah, thank you for your generosity.
Time's up.
To make this full page is... All right, so, really, I'm, this is a topic that's kind of somewhat of an unexpected presentation, but it has to do with partly my own experience when I changed insurance companies, because, well, you know, you, you tend to look around for better opportunities to save a little bit of money in a field that's kind of expensive, and I found that after I had signed my contract for my new insurance, paid my premium, I got a letter saying that if I wanted to avoid cancellation of my policy, I'd have to replace my roof. I looked out my window and I said, "What?" And, you know, I, so I disagreed, and after about a month of interaction with my insurance company, I went to a different one, and actually, I went, went back to...
And actually, I went back to my original one. They told me that, "Well, you've been gone for 30 days, so you're a brand-new customer. And yeah, thanks for coming back." And I paid my money again. And I signed my contract. I had a roof. I got my policy. And then I got a notice saying that an inspection has been made of my home. And if I don't replace my roof in 30 days, my insurance is canceled. So, again, I begged to defer that I didn't agree with that. Of course, this happened in November. And, you know, I went to talk to a roof consultant at two different hard home improvement stores. And they said, "Well, you're not supposed to put on a new roof in the middle of winter. You can't do it in the middle of winter. You know, the temperature has to be a certain level." So, okay, I talked to my insurance agency. They didn't care. They still said that I only had so much time. So, I decided I'd talk to five roofers. I guess I should be getting an estimate for my new roof. And I just wanted to show you, let's see, how do we do this? Yes. All right, we're going to go back to that later on. I just wanted to show you some pictures of my roof. And, you know, it's an old roof. I have, this is like an 18-year-old roof, but I've got a 25-year warranty on it. I'm looking at different parts of my roof. And I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing a total replacement. I just see, you know, wear, typical wear. So, I found out from the roofers that came up to me that, "Oh, they see this all the time." They said, "Well, this has been happening a lot." And one roofer told me that he got about two or three calls a week from people who've been told that their roof has failed and their insurance will be canceled unless they replace their roofs. And since roofs can be an expensive part of an investment in a home, and if you happen to have a fixed income, or if you're retired, or if you have a disability, where are you going to be finding the $7,000 to $11,000 to fix your roof? So, here's my notice of cancellation. And I guess I would not like this to be totally full. I'm wondering how I can get this down to a little bit smaller. Here, I guess that's perhaps better. Okay, we're not seeing the whole picture here. But that's my, that's my insurance, my insurance policy cancellation. And so anyways, I began wondering, well, you know, where are these people? I mean, is this happening with a lot of people? Apparently, the roofers are amazed, and they're saying that, you know, "This is a problem. Can anybody address it?" So, I've been getting emails from various people, and I'd just like to read a few of them. These are the responses that I've had in the last six days since putting this out on the WUNA, SUNA, and HUNA listservs. And I had a letter to the editor this morning. And I've had eight calls today about this question. First of all, people say, "There's nothing we can do about it." We are at their mercy. After repeated attempts, they finally told me that they would not send me the inspection report upon which they're claiming my roof needs to be replaced. The rumor was that they were basically redlining the neighborhoods with older homes. The agents warned me that if it would, that it would do no good, would not do any good to change agents, quote, "because they all use the same broker," unquote. Now, I wonder how to get my home off the bad roof list. As the cold weather was just starting to hit, I tried to get them to extend the deadline to spring. They wouldn't budge. I had to scramble to find a roofer who would be free and to secure my loan. I have argued and been incredibly frustrated to no avail. I did put on two entire new roofs just to get insurance. And homeowners ought to be able to make their own decisions about their property. I want to make my own decisions about my own roof. That seems fair enough to me. So, professional roofers, I'm quoting them now. These are letters that I've received from them. Perfectly good roofs are being replaced that have never leaked and probably will not for years to come. In most cases, the inspector never even got up on the roof. They do not care what I say. This is a roofer, who's a professional roofer. He's trying to support his client request to delay the roof replacement. They do not care what I say and require replacement of the roof anyway. And I have been perfectly, I have seen perfectly good roofs sent to the landfill. So, I got, having kind of like accumulated that information, I thought, "Okay, this is a problem that apparently, you know, it's endemic. It seems to be happening all the time." And, you know, is there anything that I, as a city council person, can do to interrupt the flow of what I think is rather unfair practice by a certain industry in our community? And it's really victimizing a lot of people. Whether they're wealthy or they cannot afford a new roof, it's still, I think, an unfair practice. So, I sent you the emails for these various things. And you've got them, and you received them from the city clerk. And I just want to go back now to a couple of examples. This is a letter from one of my roofers. I have, you know, you see, I redacted the specific information to protect the innocent. He just says he wants to share with you disturbing trend which I have observed over the last several years in my industry. Since that time, I have been, seen the scenario escalate, growing more prevalent every year. In most cases, the inspector never even got on the roof. One instance in particular, a couple of years ago, was where an insurer demanded replacement of a two-year-old roof. Why did he think it was bad? Because he thought he saw curling. But because it was a rather shallow, sloped roof, he was really just looking at the ends of the shingles, the architectural shingles that had just been put on. When we appraised the insurer of the error, they absolutely refused to re-inspect and maintained its damaged, its demand that the roof be immediately replaced. Prematurely requiring the replacement of a fully functional roof seems to be an attempt to contract out of their liability. Okay, this is where the insurance company really doesn't want to be paying damages for repair. And so, what do they do? They make it almost impossible to file a claim. Or how would they best protect themselves? They'll say that they'll cancel you. But hey, if you put a brand-new roof on, hey, we'll keep you. Well, then what happens? Hey, you own it. They're not going to see a claim on that roof for the next 35 years. So, it's pretty clever. And the insurance companies do not follow the, allow the roofs to successfully make it to the end of this period. The homeowner is being cheated financially. Okay, that's one letter. And so, another roofer is writing me, "I am writing you to express my concern about the growing trend in the industry, the insurance industry." Standard, it is standard for me to have, to hear at least three times a week this complaint. Perfectly good roofs are being replaced that have never leaked and probably will not for years to come. I have written several letters trying to convince insurance company that the roofs are fine. They do not care what I say and require replacement anyway." So, then I just have been getting letters from Urbana residents. And I got just, okay, I've got about 18 letters just in the last couple of days. I got eight telephone calls today. And I won't go through every single thing that's mentioned because actually, I put the most pithy comments here at the very beginning, which we already read. Just things, the frustration level that I'm picking up from this issue is rather incredible. So, what have I done? Okay, first I approached the Attorney General's office. I figured that it'd be like a citizen's complaint. And I received the letter, which is near the end, that, "Thank you for sending me your letter." It was the Office of the Attorney General, the United States of Illinois. And basically, "Should an inquiry into this matter or subsequent complaints indicate actionable violations of Illinois law, your file will be reviewed again, et cetera." So, apparently, it's totally legal to totally screw people out of their roofs and require replacement at the drop of a hat. Usually, you know, the time period is 30 days. I've heard up to 90. So, I did talk to, okay, I'm just going through these things. I talked to Carol Hammond's office. She's our representative in the state. I thought that, you know, maybe this is going to be something that the city cannot address specifically, but maybe the state can. And so, she's got her staff looking into this. She felt it was a very worthy question to raise. And as a result, I did get a letter from the Illinois Department of Insurance. Now, this is an agency that's supposed to be regulating the insurance business. And they responded to one of the letters that I sent to them, specifying some of the things that happened to me in my instance. And they basically said that it was really up to the insurance, the insurance company to determine what they felt was insurable. Well, you know, it's really difficult if you own a home and have a mortgage to be told you can't find insurance in your city. And one of the comments that came out of the conversations that I've had is that, once you've had your house tagged as a problem, it seems that other agencies seem to know about it. So, there must be sort of like a collective database. And one person who responded to me said, "They seem to be redlining my neighborhood. How do I get off the bad roof list?" Another person indicated to me that they noticed that there were six to seven new roofs required in their neighborhood in the last four months. They hadn't really thought about it too seriously until they came up with this issue themselves. So, I'm just wanting to make public what I think to be a problem in an important business in our community. And it might just be a perception. I don't know specifically if there is a legal issue that we could address as a city council. I would like to imagine that we could at least review our ability to protect Urbana citizens by making sure that certain requirements are in place if you're doing a policy in Urbana. And I don't know if we have the power to set those kinds of things up. But I call this a roof replacement by threat of cancellation. It seems to be a trend in our community. I would like to gather stories from other people who'll be listening tonight. And I've gotten calls as far away as outside of Mohammed so far. But I think this is probably not just a regional problem or an Illinois problem. This could be a problem that we're seeing in the nation. But, you know, and the whole thing is about not so much that the insurance company provides a service to us, but that they are now more important to maintain their profit margin. And so, they are reducing the level of risk. And on whose shoulders is it falling? I believe it's falling on ours individually. So, I'd like to gather your stories. I'd like to have a review of the process of this procedure. I'd like to identify perhaps unethical practices and maybe draft a city policy that will protect Urbana's homeowners against roof replacement or the threat of cancellation. And I'm asking, who is really here protecting the public? And who is regulating the insurance industry? So, that's it. That's a kind of news report. I feel like a newscaster on the Sunday news. And if you have a question, I don't even know if I could answer it.
Thank you, Dennis. We appreciate the presentation.
Okay, thanks.
Bill.
Yeah, I just, I had a roof replaced within the last couple of years. And I know they don't fail overnight. I knew several years ago I needed a new roof. And I don't really understand their justification for giving you such a short time period. So, I guess my suggestion would be when you talk to the people who regulate, the regulators, at least ask for like a six-month or 12-month notice before cancellation because surely, a roof, you know, a roof just doesn't fail that fast. It doesn't make sense to, and then you have time to shop around other insurance agencies. And that's ultimately the solution, is find a reasonable insurance agency. But you don't really have time to shop around in 30 days.
No, you don't. And then another aspect of this is that, not only, not only is this put a lot of pressure on you and anxiety perhaps, but if there is indeed a database, or, you know, one person said that it seems like everybody uses the same broker, or maybe there's only like one or two inspection agencies in the city. I mean, that would be, you know, one problem because then you'd be getting the same interaction maybe from that person a lot of times. And another thing is, you know, when, you know, at least what should be provided for the, you know, the client who's coming for insurance at an insurance company would be a disclosure policy that before your policy is actually accepted by our company, we're going to be sending you, we're going to be inspecting your home. And the results might end up in being, you know, grounds for cancellation or not accepting you as a client. But I would ask too that, you know, I mean, but they're accepting money. I mean, I paid, I wrote my check out. And I thought I had a policy. They gave me already, you know, automobile insurance card for my, you know, I felt I was totally covered. And then to find out, "Oh, no, by the way, you're not," is just, you know, inconscionable. And I think there should be a disclosure policy or practice. And that any inspection that's required should take place before you give them any money for the policy. But they're accepting your money first. And then they're blind signing you. And that many people, widows, the elderly, are totally afraid by this. And they're totally freaked out. And the thing they'll do is they'll run head over heels to get their new roof on. I don't think that's fair.
So, thank you, Dennis. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is a probably very, very brief piece from Pygmalion to share their...
Arbor's next.
Arbor, I'm sorry.
Oh, the agenda's wrong?
Yes. There's a presentation from Pygmalion Festival sponsorship we're going to go to next because it's more of a presentation than a staff report. Brandon, you have an hour.
Thank you.
Well, this is the shortest presentation tonight.
Actually, you'll be primarily hearing from Seth Fine and Patrick Singer of Pygmalion Festival. And I've passed around copies of their presentation. I apologize, the copies I made were not the best quality. I believe they're still legible, but Patrick and Seth have better-quality copies. A few, if you're having trouble reading it again, that's... And so, without further ado.
I don't know that we're going to be able to follow Dennis in just in terms of...
The tempo and do something happy.
Sorry about that, man. That sucks with the roofing and everything, you know? I kind of want to talk about that more, you know? Insurance regulation and all that stuff. Get to it another time. We're here to simply, you know, say thanks for last year and for supporting the festival and to give you a bit of an understanding of how we felt like it went and where we're going with it. And to answer any questions and to take any feedback that you have as a council. You know, if you remember, last year, we implemented a tech component to the festival. And I think it went pretty well. There were things about it that we didn't like, and there was things about it that we did like. And, you know, but this is the 12th year that I've done Pygmalion now. And I kind of tend to have that emotion after every festival, which is to say, I wake up and I think to myself about a number of things that was really, really stupid. And I'm not going to do that again next year because it was not a good thing. And then I think like, you know, but this was really great. So, one of the things that we kind of felt like, especially regarding tech, is that it demands more critical mass. And that the reality is, is that Pygmalion Festival, as much as I like to romanticize what it is, it's not South by Southwest. It's not going to bring in thousands of people from outside of the community. It's never going to do that in the first five years or whatever. But what it can be is a space for the local tech sector, the people who work for tech companies, the people who are studying here, engineering and computer science and various forms of innovation. forms of innovation, to have a space to learn more about what we're doing as a community and where we're going as a community. Not just as a community, but as a, as a space for people to open offices and develop business. So, you know, we did a lot of stuff in the daytime. And what we noticed is that what wasn't as well attended, wasn't as well attended was when it was in the evening because, you know, people are at work and at school. And so that was kind of like, you know, pretty apparent right away that the panels and the activations we did that were in the evening and on the weekend really were extraordinarily successful and packed. And the ones in the daytime, not as much. And so we want to kind of reroute things and we want to utilize the spaces that we feel are the most appropriate to better serve what the goal of the festival is. And that's to create some sort of energy and highlight who we are as a community. So what we really want to do is reroute a lot of things through Cranert Center. And, you know, it's a magnificent facility and it's not lost on me what an honor it is to be able to have them as partners and to be able to showcase what Cranert Center can be. And despite the fact that it's not in downtown Urbana, it still is very much in Urbana. And I think that that's extraordinarily relevant to this discussion. So we want to kind of pack it all in at Cranert Center specifically on Thursday, September The space and the facility and the type of resources that they're able to provide us gives us the opportunity to do things that we just can't otherwise do in other spaces in Champaign or Urbana. So the goal is to create an atmosphere where there are thousands of people and as a result of live music and comedians and tech demos and keynote speakers in one space as opposed to trying to do it in a more spread out fashion. And so that's really the goal for this year. I'm going to let Patrick speak about last year and the numbers and some of the things that we thought were successful and some of the ways that we feel like we could improve.
I'll start by saying, echoing what Seth had to say about saying thank you for your support last year. It's kind of hard to convince people that something you're going to do is going to be okay, even though you've never done it before. So it was fun. Seth and I enjoyed putting it together, putting the tech component of Pygmalion together in our first go around. The goal was to try a bunch of different things and see what worked and see what didn't. And we thought that programmatically, we hit, we hit well. You know, we hit a lot of different topics that we really wanted to cover and we did it in a pretty good way. As he said, some things we, you know, will decide not to do anymore. And it gives us the opportunity to learn from what we've done and kind of grow and make it better in the future. Goal is to always improve on what you're doing and what you're producing and how you're showcasing it to the community. So when it comes to Pygmalion tech, as we've learned with all sorts of different types of things, it's very important to implement something in a more meaningful and manageable way. So, you know, what we learned last year is doing things in particular spaces and particular areas of town, particular topics, they worked better than others. So, you know, things like a fiber panel in downtown Urbana was super successful. I think anyone who was there would agree that the topic is extraordinarily relevant, especially to Urbana and Champaign. So when it comes to picking out these things that we want to improve upon and do in the future, you know, obviously we'll see these things and say, these are topics and people that we want to keep engaging with. And we thought that, you know, the most engaging things are things that people can touch and see and experiment with. So when it comes to Cranert Center, you know, moving these sorts of things inside of it and expounding upon our demo component of tech is super important for us. So, you know, moving that sort of thing into the evening alongside the live music and comedy and things like that, it gives people an opportunity to kind of stumble upon all of these great things that are being created in Champaign-Urbana. So the goal is to ultimately and always expose people to new and interesting and exciting things that they probably didn't realize that they were going to run across. You know, obviously, music is, has always been kind of the linchpin of the festival. But as we continue to grow and figure out what we want to do with tech, you know, we're changing and figuring that out all the time. And, you know, working with all different types of people in town is super important to us. And obviously, working with City of Urbana again is always something that we want to continue to explore and figure out the best way to continue to grow as a festival in order to make it valuable for the people that are, they live here and they work here, they study here and they create here. So last year was a good one because it allowed us to successfully implement something that is going to help grow this festival the way we know it can alongside other, all the other types of things that we think are so great about the community. So that's how I would say last year's festival went.
I guess I'd, you know, be curious if anyone has any questions about Charlie.
I guess with respect to the tech component at Cranert, I can totally understand using that space. There is at least some Urbana business community there with the Gregory Place apartment buildings there, the space on the first floor. Do you plan on utilizing them in any way?
I think that there's certainly opportunity to do that. We plan on working with Neutral Cycle, who has an office in Gregory Place to implement a bike ride that is, links up Research Park to Cranert Center that day. And we'll probably have it end at Neutral Cycle in Gregory Place. So yes, there is opportunity. But in the end, like I made mention, we're mainly interested in developing critical mass so that when people arrive at the event, it feels like they're part of something bigger than themselves. And spreading things out too much, even within the confines of a block, tends to...
Yeah, I was thinking of the Canopy Clubs there too, you know?
Yeah, no, I've worked with Canopy Club for years. And, you know, similarly in downtown Champaign, our plans this year are to condense it even further and to only utilize a very small corner of downtown Champaign as opposed to even going across Walnut Street, simply because in an urban environment and to call something a festival and to really create atmosphere, the moment that you, the moment that you spread it out in any significant way, you lose something. I don't know how else to say it. You lose, you lose an energy. I'm sounding like I'm, you know, going down some, you know, People's Republic hippie dippy type stuff, but I'm talking about the energy that I grew up with and I'm telling you, you lose it. And it's something that I've researched and studied greatly over the course of a decade of going to other festivals and learning from other festival producers. So I think that there's a way to implement and promote that area of Urbana. And I think that there's enough food being served in that area that it can certainly serve as a, as a space to explore while people are there for the festival. But as far as the programming, Cranert Center kind of provides us with what we need.
Diane?
So last, last year I went to several of the venues downtown and also I went to hear Stephen Wolfram at Cranert. And I think it was like 11 o'clock in the morning. Are you going to have a keynote speaker in a, at a different time of the day?
Evening.
Evening?
Yeah.
Okay. So there will be a keynote?
There will.
Okay. And would Urbana's support go toward that?
Yes.
That's...
I think that the goal in looking at the kind of support that Urbana is able to offer from a financial perspective and also from infrastructure that you're able to provide to the festival is that, you know, the demo component along with the tech, the keynote speaker at Cranert Center is something that we really want to pursue. Because the reality is, is that we want the tech part of the festival to really appeal to people that don't necessarily know how to code or aren't necessarily innovators. I mean, I've said this, I don't really know, I went to school for creative writing. I couldn't tell you the first thing about the backend of a computer. But what I do know is that anytime I have an opportunity to engage with new technology and innovation, whether it's virtual reality or robotics, wearable technology, I mean, my mind is blown. I mean, I was born in the 70s and didn't get a cell phone until I was out of college. And I still have these experiences where I'm like, I can't believe I'm doing this right now. And I have that experience all the time with my cell phone and a new app where my wife is like, no, here, just do it like this. I'm like, what? And so I want to be, and we have so many of these students, just even speaking with TEC and some of the people at Research Park about all these students that are developing all these different inventions. I mean, it's really happening like right here. But there's no real like sweet space where they all get together and showcase it in one spot. And certainly if there is, there's nowhere that also has headlining musicians that brings a couple, you know, a thousand people out and kind of exposes them without unwittingly. And that's kind of the goal here is to like, you know, the best example is like there's this, you know, this company that created this mouse called, it's called Mouser. And like, you know, it's designed for cats, you know? It's a robot. And it actually really knows how to, it's intelligent and it knows how to engage with the cat. And not everyone has cats, but some people do. And so you might go to this show, you might have bought a ticket for a show and all of a sudden you're introduced to this technology. A company like Maker Girl, which empowers young females to improve themselves by embracing technology. People don't even know that this exists, but if they bought a ticket to this show or if they want to see the keynote speaker of this comedian, they arrive and they're like, oh, there's this whole world of innovation and invention and robotics that are happening around here. And so that's really what I want the City of Urbana to present. Because it's in Cranert Center, which is in the City of Urbana, is this idea of a demo, you know, festival with a speaker that is unlike anything else that we have in Champaign-Urbana.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions?
So I will reassure you that the backend is still ones and zeros, at least until quantum computing is developed.
See, my brain just melted thinking about that. Like zeros and ones.
Just ones and zeros.
I understand, but I don't understand at all, man.
On and off, on and off.
I got it.
So, yeah, so you're planning on having more music then at Cranert then or bringing some of your music over?
Yeah, so we want to basically utilize the sponsorship that Cranert gives us and expand on it by adding comedy to the mix, putting the keynote speaker in the evening, utilizing Stage Five, which is the lobby stage, as a place for performance as well. And also have a headline author in that space, all in between 5:00 PM and midnight on the 22nd. And all that, all the while have demo in the middle in the lobby. And so it'll be programmed like any festival is. I mean, there's multiple stages, there's multiple times. But in the center of all of that is this amazing showcase of the technology that exists here and the technology that perhaps even we bring in from out of town. And so I'd like to suggest that the City of Urbana would be the presenter of that, which is important to us because I think that if we're really examining what kind of look we can give Urbana and how we can showcase what Urbana is as a contributor to the festival, I think that we have to see what works best for the festival and then give it a stamp and say that the City of Urbana is supportive of Pygmalion and this is what they're presenting. And it's similar for like, you know, the music component, you know, Cranert Center's always kind of front and center because they've always supported us in that way. But like as we develop tech, you know, especially with some of the initiatives that Urbana is currently working on and being something of incubator for businesses in downtown Urbana, it feels like there'd be a good thread to explore there.
So Seth, the, the idea of introducing people to technology in a way that they wouldn't typically be introduced to it, and you talked about during the daytime, you had a lot of people who were still at work and at school and stuff like that. Have you thought about at all opening Pygmalion up to, and having something similar to whether it's for elementary students, elementary school students, or even sort of thinking in vain, in the vein of this presentation earlier about individuals who need a particular type of training? And of course, with technology being a part of everything today, is there something where you want to dig deep into your coffers and bring Common or Kanye West here and then let some other young African Americans or something be exposed to something different? I think you get my point though.
I do.
Okay.
I'd like to formally request $1.5 million from the City of Urbana. I need a vote on that right now.
So of course it doesn't have to be somebody like that, but you know...
I'll say this.
Comparable to some other person that you're bringing.
I think what you're suggesting is that we get more educational about it. And it's something that's very important to us. We definitely have plans to implement kids' programming into Pygmalion and educational programming in some way as well. I don't want to sound like...
We just have to wait for his kids to grow up a little bit more.
Well, I will say that having a child has definitely made, flipped the light on for me. All that being said, I think it's a really important part of the growth of the festival. I mean, I'm 36 years old, the festival's 12 years old now. I don't plan on leaving Champaign-Urbana ever, quite frankly. And I'd like to see this festival hit like 40, 50 years or at some point where it's just like been developing over the course of time and more partners come into it and we can get more buy-in from more, you know, different people in the community. And just like this last week, we met with this wonderful woman, Vanessa, who represents a lot of the institutes at the University of Illinois, genomic biology and like, again, brain melting, can't keep up with it, but just like I know that I want it because it's just going to continue to like add to the, you know, how rich the festival could be. So to answer your question, yes, like that's what we want. We want to be able to continue to add components. And I think that the educational part of that is, especially where we are, is part and parcel to its growth. One of the ways that we failed, not failed, one of the ways that we haven't succeeded as a festival is by, you know, we've had a hard time connecting with certain subsets of the student population. And I think that this helps grow that. If we can connect with the huge College of Engineering, connect with computer science, then we introduce them to hopefully a bunch of other different components of the festival as well. And you get this, you know, kind of broad scope of what culture is. Yeah, you know, the panel discussions, I think, as time goes on are going to help. You know, we tried last year, I tried hard to get Killer Mike to talk. I even put money down on the table. I was like, you know, what do you need? Just wasn't having it, you know? But he was, now he's campaigning for Bernie and like, I tried, you know? So it's pretty hard to get those type of like iconic figures to like even come here and let alone like speak because...
It costs. I mean, I just wanted to put it on your mind. I'm sure we could have a barbecue and talk about it.
No, yeah, it's on my mind and I'm glad you suggested it because it's something that's important to us and as time goes on, you know, that's something I should make mention as well is that, you know, as we learned last year, you know, we wanted to separate students from community and the tech component, but we just decided that the tech component just has to be free so that anyone can go to it and anyone can engage with it and anyone can learn from it. And so that's, you know, that's another reason for the ask for the funding from City of Urbana, from Wolfram, from City of Champaign, from all the different places at Research Park that would take forever for me to list off. It's just constant discussion.
Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. Any further questions, Brandon?
Well, staff is looking for direction from council on how to proceed. The request is for, to match the same amount as last year.
Yep.
But it is a change of format from the previous year. So we wanted to give Seth and Patrick an opportunity to fully explain that to council, why they feel it's beneficial for the future of the festival and why it's also good for our community, but would have a different focus on a different business district in Urbana than it has in the past.
Diane?
So what's the source of funds this year compared to last year?
Well, last year was, the event was focused in downtown Urbana. So the focus was TIF funding. We would need to explore other options potentially. We would need to explore other options potentially if we were to pursue this, this proposal.
John?
So it sounds like this is the beginning of that conversation. I think probably I'd want to hear what those options are and then see whether we can do it or not. I also need to understand a little more how the local businesses will be involved and that sort of thing.
Well, I think if I may, local businesses are involved tangentially by way of foot traffic and people being around for that evening.
Bill?
Yeah, I think the, the foot traffic in that area and the restaurants definitely would have an immediate impact, but we also have a pretty active tech community downtown, so in a way it does enhance downtown, whether it's, you know, in the basement of the, what building is that called?
County Plaza.
County Plaza, or, or Pizza M and CoLab, there's, there's a lot of tech kind of sprouting up around downtown. So I guess, I, I mean, I'd be favored and supportive at the same level. I think a former council member used to say, all money is green, so whether it comes from TIF or from our other funds, if it was worth doing with TIF money, it should be worth doing with other money.
Please don't, please don't start channeling Cliff.
Brandon?
I, I just wanted to kind of add to Bill's point because I think it's, it's really quite interesting how much tech growth has happened in our downtown, but it's really not very visible. And while it was a wonderful treat offered by the Pygmalion Festival last year to have access to so many of those places that you normally wouldn't have access to, Pixo's office, Teo and Gray's Lab and Nina Paley's studio personifies offices, this is a different approach that could potentially allow to showcase in a more accessible way that doesn't require, you know, 20 minutes of walking. So, I don't know. I, I think that's interesting, and I think we'll continue to try to bring the, the stories of those tech growth to council so you can hear about, about that as well. And we will, oh, go ahead, Mayor.
Mayor?
Is it, is it in the CD budget this year?
This year, the payment that was most recently made was for the previous festival, and that was in the Texas, TIF district.
Okay, because we're, we're working on our budget right now. Of course, we're in a period of great uncertainty since we are in the state of Illinois, but you know, we could, we're, we'll put it in the budget and we'll see what happens.
Yeah.
Okay. It's already in the markup, I guess, so.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
All right, thank you all for coming.
Thank you, we'll bring an agreement forward.
Okay, so the, the next item on the agenda is for Arbor Division Activities Update. Public Works.
I wanted to, if it was appropriate, that we would have the Arbor Division provide a update to city council members, a lot of activities, a lot of programs have transpired over the last, you know, 12 to 24 months, and this is an opportunity for you to learn what has been going on. And again, I think you all know Bruce Coverley, Arbor Manager, Mike Brunk, City Arborists, they have a presentation they'd like to go and share with you. And if we, if you have questions that can't wait, certainly we'll answer them, or if you can wait till the end, that'd be great too. So, here we go.
Oh, thank you. Mike and I are going to touch on all the areas of the Arbor Division and some of the activities that are taking place. And as we go through, I'm also going to introduce you to the staff of the Arbor Division because as everyone knows, it's the people that make it successful. So what are our responsibilities for our division, just in case you need a reminder? Landscape Management and Development, Folander Arbor. Urban Forestry is part of Arbor. And then we're also the group that manages the Landscape Recycling Center. So we'll start with our management team, Mike and I are two of those, and then Kevin Sanderson is the third member of our management team. He's the Arbor Division Supervisor, tasked with the day-to-day operation, handling the work and distribution of labor. Then we have our labor, our Landscape Section Team. We have, and these are the newest employees, I have to say, of our Arbor Division, Jimmy Friars, Landscape Technician, has just been with us a little over a year. Tracy Edwards has been with us about eight, nine months. And Tanner Brown just started about four months, five months ago. We also depend on seasonal staffing. We hire between six and eight seasonals each year, and the seasonals do help us carry out a lot of the, the tasks that allow us to put on the show, so to speak, that the public sees, the visitors see, they come to Urbana down Vine Street with plantings. And actually, we have two seasonals that have been with us for 12 and 13 years, Deb Smith and Willie Deverell. So looking at some of the things that we've been doing in the last year, one of the ones that it's, it seems kind of small, but it, it turns out to be rather large, we replaced all the hanging baskets downtown, and the ones that we had were getting old and falling apart, but they, they weren't doing a very good job. And in addition to that, we're looking at ways to save money and time, and so we invested in these hanging baskets that are called H2O Water Savers. They're basically a basket in a basket. This outer basket here sits on top of these, the shelf here, has some wicks that go down into a two and a half gallon water reservoir. And what this is, and one of the things I'd probably want to call it as a Labor Saver Basket, is it's cut our watering downtown by a third. We're, we're also going to try out a new product, I mean, for us, that's also made by this group of Labor Saver, Water Saver Baskets, and that's wraparound baskets. We're going to put out in front of the city building here on three of the poles out front. And what I'm doing is, we're, we're actually cutting back on the areas that we're putting annual flowers in. And annual flowers are a major labor investment. And, and what we've come to conclude is that the hanging baskets and, and things like this is where we get the most bang for our buck. So we're going to put more into that, and then we're going to have the annual displays on Vine Street. But a lot of the other areas that you're used to seeing annuals, we're going to start converting into permanent landscape plantings this year. In 2014, we built this little seating area that's part of the Market Square, and as you can see, early on, it's, it's popular, but it almost seems like you're sitting on Vine Street. When you're there, there's no separation, there's, there's nothing to really make you feel like you're in a space that's not in the middle of the road. And so last year, we added the, the small knee wall, it's a seating area, separates the space, and it, it made it a much more desirable place to enjoy the market from. That's what the finished product looked like. Now, when CD approached us, they wanted more seating, and so to try to accommodate that so that we can, one, create more seating to allow the market to have more places for people to, to enjoy, and also to help convert one of the beds that was in annuals over to a permanent landscape planting. We're going to add a seating area down in the southeast corner of the Market, corner of Illinois and Vine, where the big Lincoln Square sign is. If you haven't noticed, you can look over there, we're under construction right now, and we should have at least the seating area itself completed by the opening for the Market. It'll utilize that space between the parking areas where that big sign is, accommodate four more tables, another bench, and then all of this is going to be in permanent landscape One of the areas you may or may not have noticed, it's just outside this building that was installed last year, is the granite furniture that was part of the Art in the Park project. We got the granite from the City of Chicago, it's reused, repurposed granite that then the artist, John David Mooney, designed, and then we sent it to have it fashioned into this furniture, and then we installed it. So last fall, this began by creating a mock-up out of styrofoam because it's a lot easier to move styrofoam around than it is granite. And John David came down and he had to, you know, get it exactly where he wanted it, and then we marked it in place. Then once it was marked, we brought in the granite, the pieces for the table itself, were the hardest to move, required a mini skidster to pick up and get it into place. And then once it was brought into place, it had to be set on a, on bricks so that we could lower it by hand into place. And this is the, what the landscape crew does best when you give them a project. And then the brick had to be cut and relaid, just so, so it'd fit around each piece perfectly. And then that's what it looks like today. Now, a new project that we're working on that's come about is to redo that mini park that's at the corner of Broadway and Water. That's the mini park down here, and that's come about for two reasons. One, it's, it's an old park, the, the planters are made out of railroad ties, they're falling apart, some of the brick needs to be fixed so it's no longer a trip hazard. And then when this was redone, I think 2013, this parking lot here, in order to accommodate pull-in parking for Black Dog, we're selling off five feet of the park so that they can expand their parking lot. So all this comes together to make it necessary to redo that park and bring it up to today's standards. We're going to use brick from Broadway through there, so we're repurposing that brick, and it'll be nice since it's right next to Broadway anyways. And we're going to put in some new benches. The idea here is to, in, in my mind, is to try to create a lower maintenance landscape plant, so we're going to use dwarf conifers with ornamental grasses and ground cover plants to create a pleasant space without having to have as much time invested into maintaining it. So the problem in narrowing it is that we're, we're right next to this parking lot, so to help deal with that and to create some screening, we're going to use these latticed panels that we're going to pick in. So there're going to be a group of lattice panels on this side and that side of this raised planter. We're going to have one raised planter made out of some material, we haven't, we haven't picked it out yet, but we're going to have a material that we're going to pick out. This is the only tree that's going to remain that, that was part of the original park, so we're going to build this planter so that we can accommodate that tree, and also it fits the space nicely so that we have another area people can sit on the edge of that as well. And then in a part of the park, this part is going to be at the original size still, so it kind of sticks out a little bit like an L, and so it's a nice space that could accommodate an arbor. So we're going to put an arbor and a bench in there and create kind of like a little secret space where you can go enjoy a little more of a intimate surrounding. The forestry section has two arborists. John Mose is our newest arborist, he's been with us a little over a year. Cal Becku is an arborist that's been with us for almost, a little more than four years now. And then Chris Burr is the Assistant Arborist. And I'm going to turn it over to Mike to talk about forestry.
Okay, so forestry work, those guys, those jobs are quite exciting, challenging, and it's very rewarding for all those recruits out there that are listening. Let's talk trees. I thought it'd be interesting to show you a perspective of our community. Trees have been a part of it from the beginning. This is Main Street looking east from Orchard, and comparing that view to today, which is a very lush canopy. Thank you to the community leaders, our previous community leaders, for providing us a canopy today. We've been caring for our trees a lot longer than what you might think. Modern times, we have an Arbor program that started in 1975, but we have records that our community was caring for their trees in 1932. In fact, this inventory was February 20th, 1932. And there's some pretty good comments in throughout this little book, I didn't replicate here, but it's funny, you know, they, very simple, they noted the tree, the size, what condition it was in, and what kind of work it needed, and they had a map on the opposite page. Compared to today's inventory, we have over 50 points of data that we've collected in order to manage our trees. And with our today's inventory, we actually can take the inventory out with us in vehicles with our mobile units and work with our inventory, whether we're working on trees and we're adjusting the work or the work definition for that tree out in the field, or we're called out to a tree by a resident and we're looking at all their trees, we can make these changes in our inventory from the field with our mobile units. As compared to just a few years ago where we had to collect this data and then bring it back to the office and make those changes, so that, that really expedites things. Another new component of our inventory, this newest inventory is, we now share this data with the public. It's quite neat. We have the websites, urbana.mytreekeeper.com. People can click on individual trees, there's a map in there, they can look up trees by address, they can look up trees by species, they can look up trees by DBH size. We also share on the public site the eco-benefits. And the eco-benefits of our trees are, are a better way of showing the functional value of these trees. For example, this particular tree has absorbed or absorbs about 7,000 gallons of rainwater a year. So you can imagine many of these trees, how, how much money they save the city by just the lack of having to build infrastructure to handle that rainwater, they absorb that rainwater. But anyway, it's a good thing to show and educate the public on how value our trees are. As well as when they click on a tree such as they, I have here, there is an overhead Google map that's interactive over on this side, and then Google Profile, that's also So 40 years of managing our forest, one of the better things that we have accomplished is diversity. And the main reason that our program was established back in the mid-seventies was because the trees that were being planted after the Dutch elm disease that wiped out all the American elms were not really that diverse. We were getting a few, a handful of different trees, so we had high percentages of trees. And the leaders at that time thought we needed a better selection, so they hired an arborist to help decide what needed to be planted on the streets. That arborist and the Tree Commission, our first Tree Commission, set a goal of having no one species over 10% of our tree population. And I proudly can say that we are now under that, and we have no more than, I think our highest tree species is red maple and sugar maple, and they're about 5.5%. So that's pretty cool, and what that means is that protects us from infectious disease that comes in that may attack one kind of a tree. It has protected us from the Emerald Ash Bore because it's reduced our tree, our ash tree population, and we have a more diverse forest. So that's a good thing. One other way we use our tree inventory is to log the type of work that we do and to study how that affects our forest. And this is an example. If we look at the very first cycle that we went through town where we trimmed each and every tree, it was called preventative maintenance, we trimmed each and every tree from top to bottom, we repaired every tree, in fact, we had never done that before. And so we started this program in 96, and we completed it in 2010. And what that really resulted in, we did a 1997 tree inventory, and we were one year into this tree trimming program, we, we discovered 800- We, we discovered 816 priority tree hazards. Well, in 2013, three years after we completed this preventative maintenance, we identified 135 priority tree hazards. And that was an 83% reduction in tree hazards. So, just going through town once and being able to trim and repair each tree once over a 13-year period reduced mortality of, I'd say, close to 700 trees and certainly made our community a lot safer by the reduction in hazards that we had. Presently, we have about 55 priority tree hazards on our schedule. So, over the last 10 years, we want to show you kind of how we've been floating with tree removals versus tree planting. That's asked a lot. And over the last 10 or so years, this is pre-EAB, before the Emerald Ash Bore really hit us, we were averaging a little over what we were removing. So, we're floating about 170 trees from 2004 to 2013, more trees planted than removed. And then comes Emerald Ash Bore. So, what has that done to our forest? For people that are interested and want to find out more, we do have Emerald Ash Bore information on our website under Residents, then Trees, and Diseases and Invasive Species. And we have a variety of information on the Emerald Ash Bore there. Last September, I went out and I inventoried each and every ash tree to see how many were infected so we knew what we had to do. And this is what I was finding. These, both of these trees are infected with Emerald Ash Bore. I found about 2/3 of our standing ash trees were infected. Another thing I discovered was the woodpeckers had discovered them before I did. So, EAB is a small, creates a small little 1/8 hole and it's hard to see when they're exiting at the tops of trees. So, there's other signs. And it turns out that the woodpecker's damage here, going after the larva in the tree was one of the easiest ways to decipher whether an ash tree had EAB or not. I haven't seen any pallated woodpeckers yet in town. They're, they're big, so we won't miss them. We are treating trees and residents are treating city trees. So, we treated four of our special ash trees last year. We're going to treat about six this year. And they're a mix, white ashes, green ashes. These are our biggest blue ashes on, just close to Lincoln Avenue on Indiana, I believe. And so, we've got a good mix and it's spread around town as well. And we have 24 residents that have decided to treat city trees. So, we have 34 treated trees that we will have this summer. Where have we been and where are we going? So, the key here with EAB is ash trees don't hold their dead wood very long. So, when the trees start to die back, their dead branches are brittle and they, they will blow off, break off in winds and fall. It's also much harder to remove a brittle tree than it is one that's got some flexibility to it. So, it's much more dangerous to remove these trees once they die. So, we've come quite a long ways. We had 500 ash trees, I think at the beginning of, close to 500, January 2015. We're at about 280 now. I predict we'll be down probably to less 50 or so by next summer that aren't infected. So, basically, we've got, the rest of our ash trees are going to be infected in the next couple summers. So, we're trying to stay ahead of this. And so, our crews are spending more time in removing ash trees and less time in doing their other routine maintenance responsibilities. How does this affect our tree density? Well, this is kind of interesting just to look at tree density over the history of Urbana. Its highest time was back in pre-Dutch elm times, so the, the '40s basically. And we estimate that the, the community had around 18,000 trees in our streets in Urbana back then. We have never achieved that since. In 1988, which was the pre-ice storm inventory, we had about 10,700 trees. We built the ice storm loss up by about 1997 to 11,225 trees. So, we were about 500 ahead of where we were prior to the ice storm. And now, we're being knocked back down to about 88 levels with the loss of our ash trees. How does this affect our community when our community's growing? So, in 1997, we had 116 linear street miles and we averaged about 96 trees per linear mile. Well, in 2015, we've got 135 linear street miles and we're looking at about 81 trees per linear mile. So, my point with that is that the gray and the green community infrastructure really need to be viewed as symbiotic. Neighborhoods, streets, neighborhoods, communities don't work very well without trees. Trees attract people. So, how can we best increase our tree population? How can we save our tree population? The approach really needs to be multifaceted. And the point that I'd really like to make here is that we need to commit to the need at this time. We can incorporate those needs over time. But if we can commit to the need, we, as, as a community, when we can afford things, we can make those changes when we can afford, when the budget rolls around and we can afford those things. But a multifaceted approach would be to reduce tree removals, to increase tree planting. And we need to increase forestry staff to achieve the first two. To improve tree protection. We can always improve tree protection. To save significant trees, which we have started to do with our Legacy Tree Program. And continue the efforts of John Collins to reduce road salt. And I commend him for his efforts there. Okay, Landscape Recycling Center. Our present-day motto for LRC is "Good for the Community and Good for Your Yard." Bruce, you want to introduce the staff?
Sure. We have three permanent staff out at this facility as well. Two of them are equipment operators and one is what we call the LRC attendant. Paul Williams is our senior equipment operator. He's been out there the longest. Jeff Ivachovich has been, I think, an equipment operator for about two and a half years. Denny Shaddix, the LRC attendant, one of his primary duties is the delivery guy. So, he's the one that you see in our LRC dump truck delivering compost and soil and mulches out to all sorts of locations.
And Denny's the one that built that really nice patio out there of the Broadway Brick. I don't know if anybody's been out to the site, but we're advertising our Broadway Brick with the patio that he built. But he did a good job.
Those are pavers.
Pavers, excuse me.
Good job, Mike.
We need to get you on our marketing team. We started out LRC at the very beginning was a waste facility. In fact, its name was Yard Waste Reclamation Site. And we didn't do too bad in, in having the waste brought to us and people wanted it to be reclaimed. So, they would bring it out to our site and have it reclaimed, although not a lot of people knew what that meant. So, we were bringing, a lot of people, a lot of product was coming into our site, but not a lot of product was going out. So, over the last close to 30 years now, we've really been aggressively marketing the operation as a recycling operation. We now sell over five different types of wood mulches, three types of composts. We have four product, inorganic products and of course, our firewood. We not only market to broaden the users that use the site to, to reach out to them, but we also market to create markets for our product. We are now reaching out to the YouTube crowd. We're, we're trying to keep up with the generations. And hopefully, you'll be seeing more how-to videos from the Arbor Division, but this is our first. And one of the, the neat things we did with this was we filmed a part of the footage with aerial drones. So, we were able to capture, in this particular picture, in this part of the video, aerial shot of processing above the tub grinder. None of us have ever seen that. It was too dangerous to put anybody above, it's a throw zone. So, but, so it's interesting. It's an interesting video. And that can be seen on our website. We reach out to the communities outside of Champaign-Urbana with our delivery. Denny drives this beautiful truck that has our name and number on three sides of it. So, we go as far as 40 miles away from LRC to deliver our product to places like Paxton. What's this all meant over the last 30 years? Is that where our product was at 7.2% of our total revenue, it's now close to 50%. And, and that's important because we're trying to keep the tipping fees as low as possible. So, the more product that we can sell from the Landscape Recycling Center, the more cost-effective we can make disposal for people in the community. The other thing that, that we're very proud of is that 2015 was the year that we recycled our 1,000,000 cubic yard at the site. And over the total life of the operation, we have now turned, returned $10 million in revenue, non-tax dollar revenue, back into community recycling. If you haven't been to our website, please visit it. It's thelandscaperecyclingcenter.org. We also now have a Facebook page. Our Broadway Brick got 600 hits when we put it on the Facebook page. So, we're starting to see some of that move.
Those are pavers.
Pavers. And Bruce, tell us a little bit about, was it the county community service program that's stacking the brick for us?
The Broadway Brick sounds better. But they're so much better than bricks.
The Broadway Pavers. But anyways, to help us and also to help out with people that have to put in community service, we have individuals that have time to serve Urbana in that fashion and have stacked, if you go out there, more than half a dozen pallets with brick. And so, we have the brick priced at two different levels. So, you can go pick your own. And that's, I think, 50 cents a brick. Or if you want it already palleted, we sell it for a dollar a brick.
Do you deliver pallets?
No.
Dollar a brick and 250, I think, on a pallet.
But we don't deliver the brick or firewood. It's too, it's too labor-intensive.
You can get them, go ahead.
Okay. So, yeah, which reminds me, I need to get out there and buy some Broadway Pavers for use in my own summer project. But, you know, it's, it's really devastating to see the number of, of ash trees that have come down. You know, there, there are six in my immediate three-block walk. And so, how do, I know it'll be fall before you get in with the stump grinder, right? And I was looking through the report trying to find it, but I, I missed the section. Is there, I know there's a replacement program that the public is asked to help out with. And so, how, what are we doing and how are we publicizing that?
We have a co-op program for people that want to buy a tree. And that would then go on the spring after they signed up for the program. Other than that, we maintain replacement based on the date when the tree came down. And it goes into that inventory that Mike talked about. And right now, based on the numbers and what our budget can handle in terms of numbers of trees we can buy, we're out to 2020. So, a tree that gets cut down today won't get replaced until 2020.
Unless somebody signs up.
Unless they sign up for the co-op program.
And that, and that costs how much?
Oh, is that 200 and?
125.
125.
125 is all, you know, and that gets you, and the city matches that?
Yes, and that, that expedites that we put them on top of the list then because they help pay for part of the tree. And so, that expedites them and it puts them up on the.
And suppose that I live a few houses away from a tree that's been taken down, but I want to, I want to see that tree replaced. Can I, can I request a tree for a neighbor?
Most certainly.
Okay.
And that has happened.
I'll, I'll hit Mike up for a few more.
Okay.
Bill? Yeah. I remember a few years ago, the Park District had kind of a little nursery in the corner of Meadowbrook. Have we ever participated with, in growing our own trees in a nursery? Or do salvage trees that you can find now and then? Or do we purchase everything for street trees?
That nursery in Meadowbrook was a partnership between us and Urbana Park District. So, yes, we, we dabbled in that for about 10 years.
Was it, was it cost-effective?
Well, what, why we did it was the species that we were looking for, we couldn't find in the nurseries. So, we were trying to plant trees that the nurseries didn't have to give us. And publications such as our Under the Canopy publication and others have started to promote, you know, diversifying and species. And people were asking for more types of trees. The nurseries started providing them. So, it's more cost-effective for us to purchase those trees from wholesale nurseries than it is to grow ourselves, is what we found out. And that's why that nursery kind of went by the wayside. They're, they're labor-intensive. Part of the problem is having the right people to know how to dig the trees once they are ready to be dug because it's an art. But it serves a purpose and it served our purpose well. But we moved on when the nurseries started supplying the right types of trees and, and went that route.
Okay. And then, can you remind me how the accounting works for, for our own leaf pickups? Do we, I know some of our recycling fee goes to support the Landscape Recycling Center. Do we actually charge ourselves for disposal of the leaves at the same rate we would say charge Champaign?
I'm not sure that any of our recycling fee goes to, the Landscape Recycling Center is fully subsidized by user fees. So, no tax dollars goes to the operation of that site, the Landscape Recycling Center site.
I thought our recycling fee.
We, I mean, it, it goes and I think what you're alluding, alluding to is that it goes to the tipping fees that are then charged through the LRC.
Okay.
And so, yes, we do pay ourselves the, the same tipping fee as anybody else would.
And that comes out of the recycling fee that we charge?
So, if anyone, no one else has questions, somebody else, Charlie, somebody take the chair? Or can I just ask questions? What do you say, Mike? Just make up some rules?
I'll take the chair for you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Mr. Adams?
Appreciate it. So, first of all, as an avid gardener, I love coming out there to get garden compost, mushroom compost and all those different things. I think you, I think it's tremendous. For people who have, I have a constituent who has three ash trees in their yard, two in the front, pretty nice ass trees and a just gigantic monstrous one in the back, right? And they just simply cannot afford to pay what it would cost to cut them down. Do we have any sort of programs? Is there a route you would suggest that people take? How do they deal with that?
That's a good question. We do not have an assistant program to help people pay for tree removal. But one suggestion I might make that some communities are doing is to deter the tree from dying, treatment is much cheaper than removal. So, for several hundred dollars, you can, we can treat a tree that may cost several thousand to remove. So, that treatment is once every couple years. And people are looking at the treatment as though not, so much as a perpetual-type treatment for the rest of their lives, but just as long as they're in the house. So, that might be an option, is to deter the death of that tree through treatment.
And at what point, I mean, how does an average homeowner know when the tree is beyond treatment?
That's a very, that's a very good question. What the experts are saying is 50% of dieback in the trees, trees probably beyond treatment. And we have a picture on our website in the, on the webpage under Trees and Diseases and Invasive Species that shows the different percentages of canopy thinning. So, anything from 10% to 90%. So, people can look at those pictures and kind of decide where does my tree fit in that category? Is it above 50% or is it below 50%? And they're suggesting, the experts are suggesting that if it's above 50% in canopy loss, then it's treatable.
Okay. And always looking at opportunities for folks to get involved and to seek gainful employment with the city of Urbana in different places. And I see that you have some seasonal hires. And I see that you have some seasonal hires and things like that. I didn't see, do you have something like that, some openings coming up?
We actually start looking for seasonals in February. And so, at this point, we've filled all but one. And the one position I have left is to run our water truck, and that requires a CDL. So, it does require a little higher skill set than just some of the other seasonals that we hire. Generally, what we look for, I mean, the type of person that makes the best seasonal for us, I mean, I, I tend to like retired, early-retired folks that are still looking for something to do to earn money, because they tend to come back year after year. College students are good for a year, but they tend to, you know, just one season and then they're on their way. I like to find people that have done things out of doors, because I don't think how many people realize just how hard it is to work every day outside in, you know, ninety-plus degree heater at this time of year where it can go from, you know, fifty degrees one hour, next hour it's twenty degrees. And you have to be able to deal with that. And that seems to be the hardest part of this type of work that I don't think people realize. So, I try to find people that have had some experience doing something out of doors.
Okay. That's all I, anyone? All right. Moving briskly along. Yes, indeed. Sewer activity report, Public Works.
I appreciate the opportunity to come and present to you tonight. I'll introduce Justin. He's a new engineer with us. He's been with us since June, so he's almost to his full year. Recently passed his professional engineering test, so he's now a licensed engineer, and we're quite proud of him.
Congratulations.
Good.
Well, I'd like to start out, actually, it was announcement of one of my favorite events coming up, and that's the Boneyard Creek Community Day. It's coming up Saturday, April twenty-third, 2016. It'll run nine AM to noon. If you sign up to be a volunteer, you get an awesome T-shirt and free food. So, there's definitely an incentive to come out and participate in the event. We will have a site at our new Boneyard Creek Improvement Project there on the corner of Race and Griggs. So, you can come out and from that location, go out and do some cleanup activities or storm sewer inlet stenciling. And you can sign up for the event at www.bonyardcreek.org. Registration for volunteers is till Wednesday, April twentieth. I would encourage people to come out and help pick up the community. It's right around Earth Day, so it's a good, good chance for you to help out. But as far as the sewer report goes, there was a brief summary that was included in your council packets. The full report is actually up on the city website. We won't go through all the detail of it with you tonight. We wanted to be available to answer if you had any questions on that. So, I guess at this time, we'll take any questions that you might have. But kind of the purpose of the report was just to summarize all the things that we're doing, both for the storm and sanitary sewer system, and keep them operational and obviously, you know, functioning.
Diane?
Just recalling our past sewer discussions, and I remember one thing we spent a lot of time on was the program that reimburses homeowners for expenses. And I know you've got a table on the back of our, in our packet here. Are we, are we keeping up with the need as far as from homeowners applying to the city for assistance? Or how's that fund looking?
Yeah. We've, we've not exceeded the amount of money that we program for the budgetary purposes, so we've actually been keeping up.
Good, okay.
And have not actually expended the full amount in any year, so.
And does that roll over from one year to the next? Does that?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so we, okay.
So, you know, based on our current demand that we're seeing, we are able to do all the reimbursements that have come before us.
And can you remind the public again if, under what circumstances they would qualify for assistance?
Yeah, everyone is eligible for it, so you don't have to, it doesn't have to be owner occupied. It's for any property. And it's if you have any portion of the sewer lateral that's under a city street or sidewalk. Obviously, that include alley too. But the city will pay a hundred percent of the cost to replace the pavement up to a maximum reimbursement total of five thousand dollars. So, it's, it's a really good program. It's a reimbursement program, which I'll point out that we don't actually pay the contractor for the work. The property owner has to pay the contractor for the work, and then we reimburse the property owner.
Is this just for homeowners or rental properties? Or is this for businesses as well?
Businesses would be eligible for it. Generally, it has to be the person that owns the property, you know, to be eligible for the reimbursement. It can be a rental unit, yes.
And so, of course, one of my constituents, or a pair of them, come every night to discuss and to raise concern about their, they're still concerned about the sewer system in the Dr. Ellis subdivision. Can you speak to that?
Yes. And then, in fact, I'm going to turn it over to Justin for that portion of it.
Yeah, we have a brief presentation here to just give an update on some of the activities that we've had in the, in Dr. Ellis subdivision in North Urbana. So, just a brief overview and history of the subdivision. It was constructed in three phases, starting in nineteen sixty-one and then finishing in nineteen sixty-eight in the three different colors shown on the map here. Roughly bordered by Bradley Avenue to the north, Goodwin Avenue to the east, including Ellis Drive on the south, and then Row Mine. And then, this defines ownership of sanitary sewers, not just in the subdivision, but throughout the city. The city owns the collector sanitary sewers. Most of what we own is smaller diameter, and that feeds into the district interceptors, which we'll show on another map here. But what is not owned or maintained by the city are the sanitary laterals, which are the private lines connecting buildings or homes to the city main. So, here is shown, the green highlighted section would be the, the private lateral. And that's the, the part that the homeowner, property owner, would be responsible for maintaining, so keeping clean. And it's, it's something that most people should, are interested in because that provides them a service to the sewer and keeps their property draining.
Okay. Wait, wait just a second. If you go back, please. So, just for this, I mean, I've seen this, I've talked about it before, but for the sake of the public and everyone who's watching, this green is going out into the sidewalk and into the street.
Correct.
And you're saying that that's the responsibility of the homeowner?
Correct. And that's part of the reason we talked a little bit about that pavement reimbursement program, is that where the, the private lateral does run under the pavement, that would, to replace that or do repairs on that section of the, of the lateral can be quite expensive and mainly due to the fact that we've got that pavement over top of it. So, that's where the city has this reimbursement program to help property owners with those expenses in certain cases. There are parts of town where the sanitary sewer may actually be further to one side of the street than the other. So, it, it makes it easier for those people that are on the far end of it to pay for that pavement replacement as they have to go all the way across the street.
So, if someone had to replace that entire green line, and it was in the, under the sidewalk and out into the street, does the cost exceed the five thousand dollar reimbursement?
That would just, that would depend on the situation. For, for most residential streets, it's not likely. It, it depends on the total amount of material that has to be removed and replaced. There may be areas where it's, you know, you have a larger street, so there may be more pavement to remove if you have to go further across the street. So, in those cases that.
You say we come every week. Now, let us get an opportunity to talk. Let us sit up there with them.
Please, go ahead. Dr. Underwood, just give us a second, please. Go ahead.
So, in some cases, it may be more expensive. But for the, most of the residential roads in town would, wouldn't be so wide that it would exceed that cost.
I could tell you, the years we've been doing it, we might only had two or three that exceeded the five thousand dollar reimbursement total. So, I would say, you know, ninety, ninety-five percent of them are less than, you know, add or less than the five thousand.
And so, I can understand that if the bulk of them are, are not going to exceed that amount. But as we talk about individuals, whether they're seniors who have fixed income or people who have a lower income, anything above the amount that they would have to pay that is actually in their private property, it still, still could be excessive. Because even if it's that five percent, what if it was seven thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars that it costs? You still have.
Or eight thousand dollars, like Mr. Lewis, Mr. Joe Lewis. Tell them about that, Brad, Mr. Brad.
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Dr. Underwood, we, we have to be able to proceed with the people who are sitting here. You can have an opportunity to come and speak to this issue at another time.
But you, you should have told us that they were going to do that. You should have told us. It wasn't fair for you not to tell us. You didn't tell us that they were going to do this tonight. This is not fair to us. We should have had a chance to do this. We come every week for two years. This is not fair to us.
So, the amount can exceed five thousand dollars?
Yeah.
And in that case, is it just into the lap of the homeowner to pay the rest? Or is there some exception? Is there some exemption for those amounts that go past five thousand dollars?
Now, the, the way the ordinance is set up is five thousand is the maximum limit.
I would just add that this was a lengthy conversation for a policy decision that the city council made. It was not staff that made that recommendation. And similar to your point that, yes, it could be multi-thousand-dollar expense in private property outside the public right-of-way, that may be the homeowner's responsibility. Now, I don't know, CD may have some help for those low-income families that may be eligible. I can't speak to that. But just to let you know, what these two individuals have been putting into practice over the last several years now is a thorough discussion that was had several years ago. It can always be revisited in whatever fashion you want. But I want, I thought it was important that they report to you the successes of the reimbursements for the extraordinary expenses that do occur within public right-of-way under sidewalks, streets, and alleys. And prior to that, those five thousand dollar or less expenses had been incurred by property owners until city council instituted this reimbursement program several years ago.
And so, is it, of course, I was watching those meetings, and I have a friend who attended a lot of those meetings. It was the intent to, I believe, then to make sure that the homeowners were not being saddled with the cost of the, all of the piping that was in the public right-of-way, right? So, then?
No, it's the cost for the infrastructure, the backfill on the pavement is what the cost pays for. It's not the pipe. The pipe is still the homeowner's responsibility for the sewer lateral.
So, I know you all have already had this conversation, but from my understanding, if it's in the public right-of-way, I don't understand how the property owner owns it and is responsible for it.
The city ordinance definition of ownership starts at the joint where the sewer lateral connects to the public sewer. At that joint is still city responsibility. So, where you see the green bar end, there's a joint there. That joint, if that was the defect, that would be a city responsibility to repair. Beyond that joint, where the green line is, is private property definition. And that's been an ordinance for decades.
And ordinances are made to be changed?
Absolutely. They could be changed, whatever. But I'm just, I want to explain the line of demarcation as to where it's a private property and a public responsibility.
Okay. So, now that we see that this is a major issue, if only in Dr. Ellis subdivision, we do see that there's exorbitant cost that the homeowners do incur, incur to address this. Is there something that, from your standpoint or your expertise, that we could do as more of a demarcation at the point of private and public right-of-way that makes only the green piping that is actually on the private property of the homeowner the point of demarcation? And, and we can tell that only that point is what the homeowner is responsible? Is there something that we could put into that to do that? Whether it's just the ordinance or some actual physical piping or something?
I, we could pull out our notes. We looked at those costs and added those costs and what those impacts would be to increase sewer rates. We could have that discussion again, if you'd like. I think it's problematic because you need then to almost have a clean-out at that location, and Brad could speak to this better. But there was added cost then, because you have to define where that property line is between where it becomes public versus private. Do you have more to add to that, Brad? Do you recall?
Yeah. And we actually did quite a bit of research at the time of surveying. And we looked at how many other communities in Illinois took responsibility for the lateral all the way out to the main. And, you know, locally, I mean, Champaign, Savoy, Rantoul have the same ownership policy that we do. We could only find, I think, maybe four or five communities in the entire state that had policies where they took part or total ownership of the lateral. So, it, you know, ours is more the norm as far as the ownership goes. You know, most communities have policies similar to what we have.
I think Charlie was actually next, if not, the mayor.
Yeah, well, what I was going to say, that the, there's, there's two things here that I see. The complication with, with the definition of private property here, even if it's in the right-of-way, is simply because when the house is built, the city puts in, or sometimes, you know, the city puts in the, the lateral's already there, or that, that is put in by the, the developer, but taken over by the city. But the cost of the house includes putting in that lateral. So, so the full lateral is, and is part of the design and the cost of the way the house, the house was done. So, that, that's the, that's why it's complicated. And, and, you know, you've got this private item in a public right-of-way. There are other examples of that in, I'm sure that Jim can probably cite of where that happens. I mean, we use private vehicles driving down roads, for example. Okay? So, in some ways, we drive our private vehicles on public right-of-way. So, that's another way to think of it. We're, we're, you know, we're disposing of, of waste via a sanitary pipe that we own, you know, we, as a homeowner owns or a renter uses to that, to that city-provided service. So, that, that's an analogy. What the city can do, though, given that we're not using up all of our, all of our, the money that we allocate per year for street repair is up that number. And, you know, if somebody has to go completely across the road, that's a pretty high expense. And maybe, you know, that's what we can look at. The only thing we need to make sure, if we go there, go that route and pay the full cost there, that we make sure that we get competitive bids and keep the price down so that the city, the city's coffers are not being taken advantage of.
We went through quite a long discussion about this, and we raised our reimbursement considerably above what other cities have. It's, it's considerably higher than what Champaign does. And there's a, the reason we want the, the property owner to do it is it would cost more if the city did it. So, that's why the property owner makes the arrangements, and we reimburse them.
Dennis?
And the reason why it would cost the city more is that we would have to hire union help at union rates or whatever it is. And a property owner could get, you know, an individual who would, I mean, he could get his nephew probably to do, to dig the, dig the line out and get it up ready for replacement. But you can't do that if you are working at the city level, hiring employees. You can't pay them like somebody's nephew. You can't pay them like somebody's nephew. So we have restrictions about trade and wage, you know, standards that we adopt every year that play into the, those people who are running the bulldozer or the backhoe to excavate the hole.
Any other questions? Mike, I know you you will have something to say about it. So.
Could he finish his presentation or?
Yeah, I have a couple of slides left.
Thanks.
Okay, so back to the specifics to the subdivision. The city has completed inspections on the public sanitary sewers in the subdivision over the the past five years or so. And based on the inspection results, any li, or public sanitary sewer lines found with deficient, to have deficiencies were rehabilitated using cured-in-place lining technology, and that was completed in 2014. So essentially, all the pipes that were found, all the city public sewer mains that were found to have issues or possible breakages or points of root intrusion were lined, which essentially creates a new pipe inside of the old pipe. And then in 2015, so last summer, we we came across a blockage on Tremont where there, there was a large root ball that was entering the city main but from a private lateral. So this is an issue that we're starting to run into with our lined sewers. But this map shows the the subdivision, and the yellow lines shown, highlighted here are all the city sewer mains that have been lined with that cured-in-place lining. The blue line running north to south along Ro mine is the UCSD interceptor, so that's not our responsibility. And then what few orange lines are shown there were pipes that were found to be in adequate condition and did not require any rehabilitation. So back to work that was done on Tremont Street. Here we see the, this is part of the lateral. It may be kind of hard to tell, but the, this was a vertical pipe that was running down and connecting to the city sewer main. So this is a lateral, and you can start to see the the roots blocking it up. And then this was actually what was taken out of that pipe, so that's almost a complete blockage. And that was in the lateral, so the private pipe. But it was starting to enter the city sewer main and creating a blockage, which from from one or two properties that can, these blockages can enter the the city main and then create problems for the entire block if this is on the downstream side where this one happened to be. So we had a couple of people with with complaints of solely draining plumbing. And and so this, this is, just shows how root intrusion can happen. And again, our lines in this subdivision have been lined, so we don't really get much of this. But in the private laterals, and this is something that we see a lot with older construction, is that these pipe joints aren't, weren't made to last more than 20, 25 years, if that. And they're mostly old clay pipe. And so the the roots will find any source of moisture and and work their way in. So anytime there's a joint or a breakage in the pipe, the the roots will find their way in, and that's how we end up with those large blockages that we see, we saw were pulled out there. So that that connection was actually, the city, since the city maintains those connections, those connection points for three properties were actually dug up and replaced, and then those roots removed to provide sewer service to all the people upstream on that block.
Just to point out, the the city paid for that.
Correct.
Dennis has a question.
And so I've lived in neighborhoods, not perhaps in this state, but where one of the practices that homeowners would do would be to, you know, flush various things through their lines from the toilet bowl or whatever. And so is that recommended? And if so, as a deterrent for root growth within an area where there's maybe a cracked pipe? Do, what what position does the public works department take on use of copper sulfate, Clorox? And, you know, adding in this to the sewer line to remove or inhibit growth?
You know, we would probably defer to what the, you know, local contractors use. I mean, you know, there's a number of local contractors, Schoonover, DNS, that can all both do the mechanical root cutting, where they physically cut the roots out, or have chemical treatment offers. I don't know if the the city takes a position on the effectiveness, but we do know a lot of people that do routine maintenance on their laterals, you know, to keep the roots back, either with the chemical treatments or with mechanical cutting, just on a certain cyclical basis. You know, every year or every six months, kind of what they found on experience with their slow drains, they'll do a treatment. And a lot of people swear by that.
And you're not averse to these people making this attempt?
No, I mean, it's it's just kind of part of the pipe maintenance. We do a similar thing. I mean, we, in our sewer lines, if we get roots in them, we have to mechanically cut them out. We used to do chemical treatment. We don't have that equipment to do that anymore. We're actually looking at an option of contracting that out so our own employees aren't exposed to the chemicals. The root chemicals they usually use in municipal-type lines, because they're larger diameter, are very toxic, you know, to to people. It's essentially, it's a herbicide. So, you know, we want to make sure that we protect our staff. So we haven't done chemical root treatments in a while, but we still annually do quite a bit of mechanical root cutting.
I mean, I ask this because this is obviously the less costly solution to clogging in a lateral line as opposed to, you know, $120 from the root remover service.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was, I I I am on that annual plan. I have my sewer lateral cut out once or, you know, once a year or every other year, and I use a a a chemical treatment every year. And it's, it's kept me going for five or six years now that I haven't had to, you know, otherwise I'm gonna have to replace my line.
Right, so that's good to know, and I think it's worth sharing with the community who's got concerns.
No, if you have an older home, that's what you have, and you've got clay pipes, that's what you've got to do.
Please, continue.
Okay, and that kind of leads into just future activities. On top of the work that the city will continue to do, which is inspect and clean our city mains, we also encourage people to get on those maintenance programs, whether it's, like you said, six months to a year, or even if you can only do it every two years, just any maintenance, like, you know, like any piece of equipment, you kind of, you need to to maintain it because once something like this does break down, it can be very costly to replace. And the the cost of replacing it will will exceed the the cost of maintaining it for several decades. So that's, that's probably one of the more important messages we can get out to homeowners is, you know, in in advance of having these blockages or backup, or the cause of sewer backups to to continue maintenance on their private lines. And then another thing that we always like to get out there too, which we've had some recent issues with, is to always contact the city first in the event of any sewer backup or sewer problem. Because a lot of times people go straight to a contractor, and then you end up with a a bill that maybe didn't need to be paid if the city, or if the the problem originated in the city line, as sometimes they do. And and the city has staff that can come out 24/7. There's always a phone number that can be called to come out and check the city line and see if we can't get people back in service. So I think that those are kind of the important messages, just maintenance and then always check with the city.
Bill.
As far as root intrusion goes, are there any trees that are worse than others to plant near or over a sewer line?
Actually, that'd probably be a better question for Mike Brunk, but he's not here. I know Mike has said in the past, because we've talked about this before, but, you know, really, the problem isn't with the trees. It's with the pipe. You know, any tree root is gonna always seek out moisture. You've got plenty of moisture inside the pipe, so I don't think it's really a problem with the tree. It's just, you know, unfortunately, the pipe joints fail, and then the roots are able to get into them.
Okay, thank you. You haven't noticed anything yourself, though, in no patterns as far as which trees are worse than others?
Well, I mean, you know, the trees that have really shallow roots can be more problematic, particularly with the laterals, because they're typically shallower. But, you know, silver maples, you know, are probably worse than some of the other trees.
Okay, thanks.
So I I remember during this discussion, maybe, that there was a diagram of the city that you guys shared about, and I can't remember if Ellis subdivision had one of the more, let's call it, unique designs that had laterals go almost all the way across the street or into the public right-of-way. Was that a norm? Is that, is that, does that exist in a lot of other places, or was that just a problem that we had with this developer?
Well, actually, we have, we have a variety of sewer alignments here in the, in the city. If you get into some of the historic west side of town, a lot of the sewers run right down the middle of the street, right down the centerline of the street. So houses from both sides, the lateral crosses to the middle of the street and connects in. We have, particularly in southeast Urbana, a lot of properties where the sanitary sewer is actually located in the back or side yard. So it doesn't go out to the street at the, all the lateral actually runs out through the backyard and usually connects into a pipe along the back property line. In our newer subdivisions, you'll actually see a lot of the sanitary sewers aren't even in the right-of-way anymore. They're actually back behind the sidewalk on an easement. So there's been kind of a hodgepodge over the years. You know, there, there is probably, you know, whether it's in the center of the street, whether it's on one side or the other, there's always trade-offs. Obviously, the most expensive place to locate your sewer is in the middle of the street.
So I'm thinking of, you know, I think many of us have had to do this, had this problem where we've had to replace, whether it's collapsed pipes or tree roots that keep coming in, because I got tired of renting a machine myself and digging roots out of my own yard as well. And it's, it can get dangerous for individuals who are trying to do that on their own. So the PVC piping that has the seal around the joints that we've, is that what's recommended for homeowners at this particular time?
Yeah, in fact, that's the only thing we allow is SDR 26 PVC.
And it prevents the root intrusion, right?
Correct. It has a much better joint.
So I'm just thinking of a project or a plan with, that includes Dr. Ellis subdivision and other places. If we have funds that we have set aside to address these concerns when they come up, why not be proactive with it, where we know we have clay pipes with breaking down infrastructure? Why don't we just go into those places, zone by zone, using the money that we have set aside or a portion of it to actually dig those up and put in the piping that prevents a problem from occurring? And it may be more costly upfront, but I think it would save us money in in the long run. I don't know if an idea like that has been approached or not, but I just thought I'd throw it out there to see how we could actually not have to have it just looming over our heads for years to come, but to actually try to proactively address it. Because what you guys described as lining of the pipes, you didn't line the laterals in the private. You just lined the the pipes within the city. So that doesn't address the concern that the individual homeowners have coming from the laterals to those newly lined pipes, right?
Well, part of the problem is, is we don't own the laterals, so.
No, I understand it. I'm just saying it doesn't, as you talked about, you were very clear about using that, the new technology or whatever used to line those pipes. It still doesn't address that particular concern. I was just trying to make sure that I was clear about that, and the public is clear about that, right? Okay, yeah.
First of all, there's no money sitting around for this work to be done on private property, so it'd be increased sewer benefit tax, number one. Number two is, in most community.
Not on private, I'm not, I'm saying that the 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 juncture in which that we know where the, where our responsibility is, and there could be a project, a joint project with the homeowner that says that they are going to have to incur some cost to do that as opposed to waiting. But they wouldn't be responsible for the entire cost, is what I was getting at. But I I think I understand your point.
Okay. Secondly, clearly, the vast majority of communities, again, it's just a policy that was established 50 or 100 years ago. The line of demarcation of a public responsibility and private has been essentially what we're talking about here. Yes, some communities may take it to the property line, but typically, once it's on private property solely, that's not a public entity responsibility. Thirdly, anything is possible. I mean, we can resurrect some of the studies we did in the past and and relay those costs and how that translates into a sewer benefit tax increase for everybody. But if we want to expand the city payments for these situations, anything can be looked at. But I can, there'll be cost increases for those if we want to do that.
You have a question?
I think that's all we have.
Thanks.
I got a question then.
And so beyond the Dr. Ellis subdivision, my, I recall that there were subdivisions like Savannah Green or others where, because the construction quality of the pipes themselves were, what, they were basically made of tar, impregnated cardboard or something, at one point, there were many collapses. And so just say, let me know, were there any other subdivisions in the community where there were very serious problems with these, these lateral sewer lines failing?
Well, that's actually in the annual report. We actually plot out every year where we have public backups versus private. The private are where they had issues with the the laterals rather than the public mains. So those, those graphics are actually in that annual report. But, I mean, it's really, it's scattered throughout the city. It's more of a function of when the age the pipe was installed. You don't see the problems in the newer subdivisions like, you know, Behringer Commons and Stone Creek. Actually, we haven't had many problems in Savannah Green. That was, you know, in the plastic pipe age. But, you know, I'd say, you know, over 95% of the older laterals in the community are clay pipe. And, you know, that's, you know, we see lots of root issues, you know, with those. The pipe you're referring to is is called Orangeburg. We haven't seen that much of it. Occasionally, we run across, you know, we'll refine one, but, I mean, it's been a handful of those. But it was actually a cardboard pipe impregnated with a bitumastic material, and they've had problems with that. But that, that's a very small percentage of, most of the pipe for laterals is clay.
Those Orangeburg pipes are in the Scottswood subdivision, so Dotson and to the east, it's in the county.
So, yes, Diane.
Is there a plan to systematically re-line the sewer mains in other neighborhoods? Like you described has been done for the Dr. Ellis neighborhood? I'm thinking of the older Westerbana, Historic Easterbana.
So, yeah, as we come across sewer problems, we we do try to prioritize areas. And it doesn't, it it does tend to be somewhat geographic based on the construction of the pipe. One of our main priorities lately has been lining through sanitary sewer that was, that is made of reinforced concrete because of a certain chemical reaction that is caused that erodes the inside of the pipe. So we're, we're trying to get out ahead of that. And where we don't have sewers that are at risk of failure, we do line the, or we prioritize the concrete pipe, sanitary sewer. So when we do come across, as we, as we come across, or as we receive complaints and do inspections of pipes and find issues, we'll put those on our, higher on our list of priorities. But other than that, it's typically targeting a concrete pipe.
Okay, thanks.
The areas of sanitary and storm sewers that have been lined is quite impressive citywide. I forget what the percentage is or how many miles, but it's, throughout the city, we have a lot of lined sanitary and storm sewers.
I think we're at 20% now, so 20 of our 100 miles of sanitary sewer.
And the beauty of that product is it originated in Europe, is is that it has a very good track record that has been holding up together for decades now. It probably started in the 50s and 60s in Europe. And, you know, is it have a 50-year life or 100-year life? We don't know. But the beauty of it is, is that it does prevent root intrusion. It does prevent a lot of infiltration of water into the sanitary sewers. So it helps in many ways to ensure the functionality of our sewers and make use of the full diameter of that sanitary or storm sewer.
And the best part is it's no dig. You can imagine if we had to dig up twenty percent of the sanitary sewer system and replace it by open trunks, you'd probably have a lot of complaints from residents.
So I want to thank you all for the presentation. I want to thank you for specifically addressing and speaking to, I think we all know that Dr. Underwood and Bishop Underwood have been coming to address this issue and, and keeping it in the forefront for quite a long time. I thought it was considerate of you to have a presentation to, to at least speak to that. Now, so thank you for that. And I don't think time actually permits us to allow a response at this particular point, Bishop and Dr. Underwood. But I do believe it would be, it's certainly possible for you all to, to put together a response if you want to take time to present to the council your response to this, either next week or the week after. Surely, we can get that on, on the agenda for you all to do that. We've had several presentations tonight, and I think it would be just fine for you all to do the same. And where you have more time to actually, to speak to those, if you had any particular concerns about what was raised or ideas or whatever. I hope that would be sufficient for you and Dr. Underwood. So moving on.
Yes, Matt, just may I just say something? Yeah, because I, you know, to me, it's, you know, it made us look like, you know, we've just been doing things off the top of our heads. But we've been before this council with professionals like Mr. Rex Bradfield. And we had an attorney here. We met with the city. Mr. Robert Lewis, when he was on the council. He worked with us on there. So we're just not coming off the top of our heads here. And we had many people who worked for the city who knew this when Dr. Ellis was built, that there were some things that happened with the, with the person who built it. And things were not right. And when Mr. Lonnie Clark was on this, we've been trying to find the information. His wife knew that there were some things happening, but we have not been able to find the information. So we're going to try to, and we tried to get some people to work with us at the university, but we understand that the city people, staff people tried to keep them from working with us. Fact. So we can't get anybody to work with our committee. So we're going to have to go out of town and get another university to try to work with us because there are some people preventing, the city people preventing the university from working with us.
Okay.
But we're going to try to get somebody if we have to pay. Our people have been trying to work with this for two or three years, emails and everything, because something is wrong with what's going on. Rex Bradfield, I think that was his first name, ran against the mayor here. He's come before this city with all kind of information. Now, I know you can go back in the records and find this. Now, I'm not going to take no more time, but we're going to come up with something because something is wrong with what's going on. And all of a sudden, they're going to go get something from everywhere else and say, everybody else is insane. Something happened when Dr. Ellis was built, is something wrong. And they had promised Mr. Lonnie Clark, when he was on the city council, that something was going to be done about it. And his wife had met with, we all met over there with the people, the city, the city. Didn't we meet with you all? Yes, we did.
All right, so we're going to, to move to item number seven, resolution number twenty sixteen dash zero four. A resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement, redevelopment agreement by and between the city of Urbana and the Urbana Park District Community Development.
Okay, I actually just wanted to bring your attention, this is like the never-ending staff report, but here's the, the dis for social service funding, and you will get some tables by email. And if you could please let Kelly or Matt know if you're interested in hearing presentations from any of the agencies. We have time set aside for the April twenty-fifth council meeting. Also, on Friday, this Friday, we have the Urbana Arts Grants Announcement Celebration, five to seven at Pizza M. And, and Brandon will be presenting the resolution.
I also have a couple of quick highlights from the business development report that was emailed out. The Rildor Bus Tour for twenty sixteen will be held on April twelfth. That's tomorrow morning. So if you're planning on attending, I hope you are SVPed. We expect to have great turnout. Thirteen oh one East Washington, the former TriStar office. The city's planning to work here with Jay Sikorsky of Coldwell Banker Devonshire Realty to move forward with disposition of the property. Colab has two new businesses. Actif is a wearable technology company. I think wearable technology was one of the things that blew Seth Fine's mind that he mentioned earlier. And Scobar is a screen printing apparel company. It's got some nice quirky designs and they've been doing well in the market. The Washington School is going to go up for bid for public sale by the Urbana School District on May eleventh. We're going to help with the promotion of that as best we can and also advertise it for potential TIF incentives should the new TIF be created. Lastly, the TWG Development Proposal for Two Hundred South Vine. There'll be a development announcement hosted by the developer at the Urbana Civic Center at, on April twenty-sixth at six P M. So moving on to the resolution before council. This, the intergovernmental agreement for the city council would authorize an agreement with the Urbana Park District for the reimbursement of TIF eligible expenses for park projects in the Cunningham Avenue redevelopment area, also known as TIF four. The redevelopment area was designed to contain a high concentration of public park facilities, including Judge Weber Park, Perkin Roads Park Site, Chief Schumacher Park, the Hickory Street Site, and Ambucks Park. Improvement and development of these public amenities is a, is and has been a central goal of the TIF four redevelopment plan. And in pursuing this goal, the city has regularly issued reimbursements to offset park improvements of these public amenities. This agreement that's before council would document and clarify the longstanding administrative agreement between the city and the park district to ensure that TIF four will continue to provide reimbursement to the park district for TIF eligible expenses through the end of the life of TIF four in twenty twenty-five. I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Dennis. So I'm, I guess I'd like to get maybe some clarification about what kind of improvements the park district is hoping to receive from TIF reimbursement. Are these improvements that are just within the park itself, or are these along the avenue itself? Are we talking about landscaping along Cunningham?
I don't believe so. I think we're only talking about improvements on, on park district property.
And what specific improvements are they requesting help with? Do we have a list of these improvements?
Not, I mean, we have a list as provided in the memo of some of their upcoming projects planned in TIF four, which include trail expansions, lighting, parking upgrades at Ambucks Park, drainage and parking improvements at the Dog Park, improvements of recreation facilities at Chief Schumacher Park, and development and restoration of the Perkins site. In addition, they, yeah, the recent improvements can also be submitted for eligible expenses as they've already acquired expenses that have not been fully paid off through these reimbursements.
And are these items that are above and beyond their own ability as a taxing district to acquire payment for?
Well, as reimbursements, they're reimbursed for the work that they've done. So that they are paying for it, but they're also paying for it with the expectation that they will be reimbursed because that was a core goal of the TIF district was to also improve the park facilities. And I think, I mean, I wasn't around when this was originally formulated, but it makes perfect sense that if the goal of the TIF is to improve the parks, then it should be the park district conducting those improvements, and we should be reimbursing the park district rather than trying to do it the other way around.
Okay, so, so maybe what I missed was that, I mean, usually the TIF is for economic development in an area. And of course, we have developed the Boneyard Creek.
Yes.
But that's because we own the property. The park district is not. But the park district is a specific co-partner of recipient, of receiving funds as specified in the TIF district. Is that correct?
In the redevelopment plan, I don't believe it specifically said they would receive funds, but a goal of the redevelopment plan was to improve the park facilities, just like we improved streets and streetscape in our downtown and created the Boneyard. So since, since it was park district property, park district has been conducting those improvements and they've been receiving reimbursements.
Just so I understand, this agreement, we're basically agreeing to give back to the park district all the increment that the city is collecting in the, from them in the TIF district, TIF four.
That's not quite accurate. We are allowed, we are reimbursing them for an amount that's equal to that, but they have to actually have created expenditures in that amount within the TIF district that are eligible.
But they're not required to make those improvements?
They won't be reimbursed if they don't make improvements of that nature, yeah. So if there's, if there's no continued improvement to the TIF, then there's.
Can I ask a question about her question then, as a follow-through? So, okay, so then if we are reimbursing the park district and we're up to, you said the level of their TIF contribution?
Yes.
Increment. Then at the end of the year, when there are distributions annually to the different participating TIF district, partners, do they also then get another distribution to the park district? Or have they used their share up through these reciprocal repayments?
If I'm not mistaken, we've only made surplus payments from TIF one on a regular basis.
Right, surplus payments. But we're talking about TIF four here too, right?
That's correct. And so the payments, the reimbursements to the park district from TIF four do not overlap with surplus payments to the other entities. And this, this effectively will I can't think of the term. It would, it, you know, the agreement is going to more formally describe the manner in which that these expenditures happen. So that effectively, those are going to be expenditures that we anticipate on an annual basis to occur within the TIF. So normally, we determine surplus based on any funding, which at the end of a fiscal year is not being set aside for some other use that we anticipate in the future.
So these are discreet and separate amounts?
Yes, exactly. This will be kept separate from surplus.
And then have we done this somewhat already in the improvements when we repaved Broadway and they extended a walking trail on the side in the parkway on the east, the west side of Broadway?
That was not in a, within a TIF area.
That's not.
But, you know, given the proposed boundary of the new central TIF, you know, that's the kind of, of collaboration that, that could potentially occur if it was deemed a appropriate activity to be funded by the TIF.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out if there's some kind of double dipping or something, and I just was wondering about it.
Not to my knowledge.
Charlie.
Yeah, so continuing along, you know, to me, this is the formalization of what we have been doing with TIF all along, which is intergovernmental cooperation with the park district and the school district. The school district, we give, you know, we, we help with their various programs and, you know, TIF three had specific King School and King Park pieces. So my question is, do we have the same kind of formal agreement with the school district coming for, for TIF four? And, and will we have something for the new TIF as well?
We will, that is also something that we plan to do, is to create a similar agreement for the school district for vocational payments in TIF four. And if similar vocational payments are intended to be made in the new TIF, then we would also like to have a formal intergovernmental agreement with the school district. So that these things are very clearly laid out for all parties.
So just to make sure, did you have a question, Mike? Go ahead, Mayor.
So you say vocational payments, because we've talked about this before, that we wanted them to be able to maybe start their project where they would build a house and then teach the students all the basic skills of construction. So is that something that you've talked about with them?
Not specifically. We wanted to start with the park district agreement, and then we would move forward with the vocational discussion. If we want to, you know, similarly, there's been a longstanding administrative agreement with how vocational payments have been made to the school district. So I think we need to start with honoring what's been done in the past or having a deliberate and intentional discussion with the school district about any changes that the council would like to propose. For the new TIF district, however, I guess it's kind of an open slate to have that conversation. But I think the appropriate place to, to get to the details of what the school district might be required to do would not necessarily be in the redevelopment plan or the actual creation of the TIF. Of course, we want to make sure we're setting the appropriate broad goals in that plan, but in the forthcoming intergovernmental agreement with the school district for those vocational payments.
I'm glad they're still talking about vocational training because I think it's really important.
So just, I just want to make sure that I understand and I'm trying to put it as clear terms for the public who is paying close attention now to tax incremental financing, going along the lines of Dennis's question. The park or the school district, they really don't need help from us collecting their taxes, right, or that what they would get from any given point, at any given time, right? They don't, right? So when we give them money, when we create a TIF and we give money to the park district or the school district, we're not giving them anything that they wouldn't have already gotten. I just want to make sure I'm, is that, is that correct?
Well, it's, again, it's not simply money that's being returned for the park district. It's reimbursement for TIF eligible expenses occurring within the TIF that are consistent with the redevelopment plan. If for the school district, there are payments for vocational training specifically. So those, the money comes back with conditions that are designed to make sure that those expenditures are occurring in pursuit of the total objectives of the TIF districts.
So if I'm a school board member and I get tax revenue, I can spend that on vocational training or whatever I decide to spend it on, right? So does the TIF that we create give more to the park district or to the school district than what they would normally accumulate through their tax base on their own?
No.
So then when we give them money back and earmark it, we basically took the tax revenue that they would have gotten through their own tax base and then tell them what they can do with the money?
The TIF aggregates tax dollars for specific objectives as defined in the redevelopment plan. However, we want to give the money to, back to the entities that can best perform the work that's, that's being carried out towards the goals. So vocational training has been decided in the past that the school district is the best entity to deliver those services in pursuit of the total TIF goals. Similarly, improvements of the park, we reimburse the park district rather than contracting out those services ourselves.
Right, but I guess at the end of the day, what you're still saying is that we created a TIF that took tax revenue from the school district or the park district and we used it, and then we, we reimbursing it back to them, but it was theirs from, from the get-go. I don't know how we can, I don't.
The benefit is the economic tool that's being created. It's, it's the fact that you can achieve outcomes of economic development, specific projects, public amenities, and also community plan goals in a very deliberate and concentrated fashion that generally you don't see occurring without the absence of tools like TIF.
But then those entities, the park district and the school district, have to put their projects on hold until we reimburse them their money, basically.
I would say that the school district and the park district don't have tools to encourage economic development of this nature available to them, unfortunately. It's something that, by Illinois statute, that cities have the responsibility and the opportunity to do. And we're fortunate to have partnered with our school district and park district to be able to enact and pursue these kinds of major economic development objectives. objectives.
So just to make sure I'm crystal clear, and I think other folks are as well. So if I'm going to get $50,000 as the School District from taxes, and I'm going to spend that $50,000 building two houses, and I want to do that next year, TIF comes along, and the City of Abana says you have to wait until 2025, and then we'll give you that $50,000 back, and you can start building that project. That's, in essence, what you're saying, right?
No. If the School District's only goal was to maximize its tax revenue, then I suppose our School District would not have historically supported any of our TIF districts. But they have, because there's a broader picture that they take into consideration, because they want to support the economic growth of this community at the same time as they improve the education of its citizens.
No, I get that. I can understand that. But I just want to make sure I understand the nuts and bolts of it. We're taking money, basically, from the School District and Park District, using it for X amount of time, then when we're finished using it, doing development and different projects, we give it back to them. That's what happens, right?
You know, we don't take it from them. They voluntarily allow us to use some of this income that they would have received to place in a pool with other groups for the betterment of projects in the community. They voluntarily agree, because they sign a contract or an agreement. So they're voluntarily entering into this. They're not being forced into it, or we're not stealing from them or sneaking it past them. They actually have agreed voluntarily to participate.
Yes, Libby.
Just a few things to add. And we are going to come back with a more complete presentation on the TIFs. We've been working on that. It's a really worthy topic, maybe for earlier in the evening. But the theory is that TIF benefits all the taxing districts, because it's a very powerful economic development tool. So it's about creating increment that would not otherwise have occurred. So that's the theory. It's just the increment. It's not anything that exists. And for the participating tax districts, yes, they forestall, including the city, general fund increment, because it creates a pool of money that can encourage that increment to be created in the first place. The other point I wanted to make, and you'll make sure nobody was misunderstood, that each of our TIF districts have been really different. They've had really different redevelopment goals. So the downtown TIFs are really kind of the heart, and the downtown TIFs are such a heart of our community that the taxing districts have really embraced, historically, the improvements that we've made in the downtown, because it helps the city as a whole. And when the city thrives, more people live in the city, and they pay their taxes, and it's good for the parks and good for the schools as well as for the city. TIF 3 had unique properties, and we were able to, in particular, work with the School District on the King School property there. We paid essentially, TIF 3, not we, but TIF 3 paid for the entire addition for King School with the gymnasium and the community room, as well as air conditioning, and the paths and connections in King Park and the additions. And we were able to do that with TIF because of the amazing performance that it had with projects like the Hampton Inn and the other commercial along University Avenue. We were able to put it back in to benefit the whole neighborhood. TIF 4 is also unique in that it was really, if you look at the boundaries of TIF 4, and that was actually one of my first projects with the city, was to create TIF 4, it includes, it's a strange boundary, because it includes a lot of park properties. And at the time, the Park District was looking for ways to improve unimproved parks. And one of the benefits of TIF 4 has been the Kerr Avenue facility. We've been able to assist with that. And, of course, the relocation of O'Brien Napleton and all the road improvements was another positive for TIF 4. We've had many other projects. So we had a letter agreement with the Park District at the time of establishment that pledged that we could reimburse up to what their portion of the increment would be for eligible projects. So that's not something that we've done with other TIFs, but for TIF 4, that was the agreement. It's an administrative agreement. TIF best practices are that we formalize these agreements. The vocational payments are different yet. Those are spelled out in the statute, the Redevelopment Act, that provides for vocational agreements. We've done those for a very long time. But it's also best practice to have that under an intergovernmental agreement, not just in the budget and in the annual report that it's been. So that will be our next step. And we've been working closely with all the taxing districts through our Joint Review Board on the formation of a new downtown TIF. And we've taken the first step towards that. We continue to work with the staffs, and we've been asked to come and make presentations to the boards of the Park District and the School District. So we'll be doing that in the near future. We'll also be coming back to this council with some of the retrospective analysis that has been requested, and that will help us understand about the performance of the TIFs and some of the special projects we've been able to do as a result of the TIF. So, you know, we've had this agreement, it was special for TIF 4, but it really needs to be documented differently and put in this format. That has been the advice of our TIF attorney.
Charlie.
And with that, I'll move Resolution 2016-422R.
There's public comment on this issue.
Oh, okay, well then, okay, let's get it.
I had a question, actually. I was trying to figure out if, I thought I heard the presentation from Pig Million say that they, or Brandon may have said that we used TIF money to give to Pig Million for the festival, right? So we can give money for a festival out of TIF? Can we do, is that where we can, so for instance, can we give money out of TIF to the Fresh Start initiative?
So for festival sponsorships or, you know, activity-based things, that falls under the category of marketing within the TIF district. So you're trying to create a vibrant economic activity within your TIF district. So that would be the question I would apply to any other suggestion for how TIF would be funding other activities.
I don't know if that answers my question about, can you use TIF money to support a program like Fresh Start?
I don't believe that Fresh Start would market the specific area of any TIF as a destination or a, you know, thriving place to start a business or invest in property or, you know, engage in economic activity. So I don't believe so.
But if you can do it for vocational training, then there could be some correlation between vocational training and technical training or something like that?
Certainly, if the TIF was painted into a, you know, a provider of vocational services, and that was a part or a component of a larger program, I'm certain that would be okay. But again, we would need, we want to put that into an agreement and make sure that the entity that we're contracting with to provide those services is, you know... We can't require them necessarily to do all of those things of the broader program, but we can provide funding for vocational training.
This would be a new TIF, TIF 4, right? It would be a new TIF?
I mean, I'm not sure.
The reason why I'm asking is because we said there was a way to change the language to fit and format it. Like you said, if the old way of doing things was to give money for vocational training, if we wanted to do something different, we could maybe possibly change the language for a new TIF to be able to include something else, like technical training or something like that.
For the central TIF, if we were to continue the conversation with the School District about providing vocational services or another entity that could provide similar services, such as Parkland, we would have an intergovernmental agreement. And if that agreement specified that those vocational services were delivered in a way that was consistent with a broader program like Fresh Start or another service, then I imagine that would be conducive. But I would want to run that by our TIF attorney. And of course, we would need to build support with the taxing partner that's providing those vocational training services.
All right, thank you.
That's it for me.
Again, I don't know where to start. I think it's very important that we just don't talk about theory anymore, but we look at historical evidence. We have that to do. I think a lot of what was shared tonight was shared with the intent to clarify. I think it did more muddling in the public's perception of what's going on. I would like to say I'm not questioning your intent tonight on the resolution, but I question the effect and the perception it's creating with the public, and the taxing bodies are affected, and I'd just like to read a statement. How the city administers the flow of millions of TIF dollars has great impact on both private and public interests in the community in ways that seem confusing, convoluted, or unfair. TIFs artificially and drastically change the dynamics of the free market in unforeseen ways and disrupt the local property tax structure in ways that appear to help some taxing bodies and significantly hurt others. With the approval of the TIF 4 Park District resolution tonight, two local taxing bodies will no longer incur any financial risk in TIF 4, the city and the Park District. Both will be able to obtain and use all of their TIF 4 property tax dollars during the next nine years. $1.4 million for the city, $1.2 million for the Park District, with no need for either to worry about recapturing these dollars when the TIF terminates. On the other hand, six taxing bodies will continue to be denied all or almost all of their TIF property tax dollars in TIF 4. This will amount to over $6 million to the School District, which will now fund 70% of non-city, non-Park District TIF 4 projects. Their only hope to recapture these lost dollars is through increased EAV, literally decades down the road. Now, you need to think about this in the communities to start understanding this dynamic. Is it fair and equitable to all taxing bodies, this resolution? Or has the city adopted a convoluted allocation system favoring some and hurting others to the detriment of the broader community as a whole? One, this resolution suggests the city needs and the Park District needs are of greater value to the community's general welfare than schools, health services, transportation, forest preserves, all of the other taxing bodies who you are collecting property tax dollars from. It suggests that the city's claim that it needs TIF 4 money to incentivize economic development is weak, or maybe even nonexistent, because it gives the Park District absolute access to the totality of its TIF monies for the next nine years, and it's not going to be used for economic or EAV growth in the park. It suggests the investments in non-direct EAV growth project, city staff salaries, streets, sidewalks, park improvements, that do not generate EAV growth needed for the other taxing bodies to recapture their diverted TIF dollars are of a minor concern to the city. 70% of the TIF 1 and 2 investments in the last six years were non-economic, if you look at the historical record of it. TIF 1s are artificially and drastically change the dynamic of the free market forces. Is using the public's property tax dollars the best way to incentivize economic development? I suggest you read the 2006 study on Illinois TIFs by Di and Maryman. And if you want, I could email you a copy of that. Four years ago, the city approved repayment of 70% of the incremental property tax accrued to a new startup business entitled the Soccer Planet.
You have one minute, Mr. Cruz.
Okay. I hope I can just finish what I have to read on the topic. Two months ago, the city approved a similar agreement with the Soccer Planet for the expansion. I was sitting here that night for another $300,000 for eight years. The owner stated in a full-page feature in the News Gazette, and if you read that, they said, "We have been growing each year. Based on demand, this seems like a good decision. Can't get field time until 11:30 PM. We draw 3,000 people a week to the Soccer Planet. Does this sound like a struggling business in a blighted area that needs tax subsidies for growth? Most people understand the justification for the first subsidy, but the second seems wholly outside the original intent of TIF dollars, namely incentivizing new business and addressing blight." Was this public tax dollar subsidy really vital to the expansion of Soccer Planet? Is the business principle at work in TIF now? Simply ask, and you shall receive, regardless of the business actual's viability, profitability, or monetary need? How do these tax subsidies affect competing businesses, or where businesses locate in town? Is there a level playing field going on for all businesses in town? It's time for a moratorium on TIF 4-funded projects. All future TIF 4 monies should be given back to each taxing body so they can provide their services to the community, much like you're doing tonight for the Park District. The city can take its own TIF 4 monies, $1.4 million you're collecting in the next nine years, and use it how you desire for economic incentives, if you feel it's that important. Also, tax bodies are not voluntarily participating. They have no vote. They have no say. They come to an annual meeting. I asked you once, and I'll ask you again, before you adopt a new central TIF, do you support asking the taxing bodies who are going to supply this money to you whether they support the new TIF or not? Thank you.
I move Resolution Number 2016-422R to council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
So it's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. That motion passes.
Next up is my resolution, actually, setting the time for meeting adjournment.
Do you sense the irony here?
Is what?
Do you sense the irony here?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Anyway, so when we switched our meeting time from 7:30 to 7:00, didn't really think about the ending time, which was, you know, our original meetings ran from 7:30 to 11:00, and now they run from 7:00 to 11:00 with us having to take a vote to extend. So basically, I'm going back to the three-and-a-half-hour aspect by setting a 10:30 time, and then we can simply vote to add time after that. So, and I can see by the many droopy eyelids here that we've already exceeded our tolerance for meeting tonight. So are there any questions for this?
Second.
Let me make the motion first. I move to send this to council with that commission for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. So the next item on the agenda is the discussion around drug paraphernalia, and we did get a memo from the legal division dealing with this. We could make this rather simple. I have a proposal that you could all just vote yes on, and we can move to council for recommendation for approval.
Discussion.
Oh, yeah, my fault.
Send it to committee in two weeks.
So we could move it to committee in two weeks.
If we can amend it to put my billboard ordinance on there, I would do that.
So if no one else held discussion, I will ask Charlie to take the chair for a minute.
Okay, I'll recognize Eric. Aaron?
So... So something that I think we could send for approval, what do I do with it? Is that we all paraphernalia associated with the, with cannabis use, whether it's used for smoking, weighing, inhaling, grinding, digesting, or whatever, all that paraphernalia be, that fine be lowered to $25.
Okay, I, I have a question of our attorney. You know, given the complicated nature of the ordinance and its interaction with the state ordinance, would it be best to separate out cannabis from the paraphernalia ordinance in some fashion as sort of generally described by Aaron? Is that, is that the way we should start this discussion, is to make a separation?
I can't tell you what to do because that's a policy question for you all. However, as stated, the ordinance probably would be illegal. You can't, the, the problem is not even so much paraphernalia. Paraphernalia are common, everyday objects usually, that in ordinary circumstances are lawful to possess. However, when used in the context of either illegal substances or controlled substances which are possessed illegally in the absence of a prescription, it becomes difficult. Now, I do understand Alder Person Ammon's limitation on just cannabis. Cannabis even, just limiting to that is not quite so easy because, first of all, our ordinance deals with only possession. It cannot deal with delivery, sale, manufacture, that kind of thing. I don't know if you included grinding and that kind of thing. It can only be used, or our ordinance applies to possession. That's first of all. Second of all, even though possession, simple possession of 30 grams or less of cannabis is a misdemeanor under the Cannabis Control Act and a ticketable offense under our ordinance, cannabis, when it's over 10 grams but up to 30 grams, if paraphernalia is found, which suggests manufacture, intent to sell another, it's something other than personal consumption, that is a felony. And we have no authority pursuant to the Illinois Constitution and in particular the provision on home rule to in any way address felonies. So if you were to decide on a fine strictly for cannabis, you would have to in part restructure the paraphernalia, our paraphernalia ordinance, to clarify, and you would have to then have a bifurcated fining system, one for controlled substance, if that's the direction you all want to go, and a fine for the cannabis paraphernalia.
So I'm going to say that obviously this discussion is going to need more time. So if we are amenable to making sure that this conversation is on our next committee, the whole agenda due to the lengthy presentations tonight, then I think we could just simply move to have the discussion in two weeks. But also, I would anticipate that Alex and Chief Conley and the mayor would have something for us to discuss in relationship to the traffic stop study as well in two weeks. Yes, it would be nice to have as little else on the agenda as possible. Diane?
Well, I, I think our priority should be the traffic stop study in terms of how we spend our time and effort at this stage of the game, and I appreciate the importance of this paraphernalia. But if you look at the numbers of tickets issued or for, for drug paraphernalia compared to the numbers that we're looking at in the traffic, traffic stop issues, there's no comparison. So I, I would think if we're going to be looking at our time, I'd rather prioritize our time in terms of looking at the traffic stop, which was our original mission as far as racial disparities and traffic stops.
I certainly don't have a problem with us looking at the, those disparities. And I haven't seen the numbers on the paraphernalia tickets, so...
It was an email to the council, March 17th.
All right, I'll have to look back at that and see. So I, I think that we can have the, both discussions, but I would definitely understand and accept what you're saying about making sure we look at the, the, the traffic stop data. And I believe everybody has filled out the survey, so we should have that prioritized and able to move forward. Dennis Roberts?
Yeah, so I appreciate also, you know, bringing this up. And, you know, it might be that, that, Aaron, you might want to try to pursue this bifurcated system of, you know, separating out, you know, controlled substances from cannabis substance possession and fines, according, you know, with paraphernalia. I mean, I guess one could do that. I, it's good, that's, I'm going to take, I think, a long journey in the legal department to kind of sort that out. Yeah, so I don't know, that's quite a, quite a challenge. That's the harder part, and I don't know, you know, maybe I agree with Diane. We should probably go back to disparity that, that affects the most people the most severely. But we'll see. I mean, we can do as much as we can.
Absolutely. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Just declare it, yeah.
All right. This meeting is adjourned.